There you go, Steve. Here we go. Good morning, everyone. Hello? Usually I'm saying good afternoon, but this one's a good morning. This is a, it's almost the historical Board of Supervisors meeting here on Saturday morning now, so. Like to say good morning to everyone. Welcome to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, February 3rd, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. I'd like to first start off with a call of order and roll call. Andrew Hensley. Luann Wallace. Luann, her husband's mother passed away. And she was not able to attend. She sent us her apologies. Tara Di.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Rebecca Di.
Here.
Nate Kaiser.
Here.
And Steve Breeding.
Here.
Chairman, you have a question.
All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is invocation. Caleb, would you do the honors, please?
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, and we ask that you forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Thank you for allowing us to come out and be safe this morning. Lead, guide, and direct us in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Legion stood the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. Do I have any motions to amend the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda for board appointment on the, under number three for the DSS. Committee appointments and board consideration? Yes.
They have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Okay, the motion, it is amended. Okay, next item under new businesses, approval of the minutes for first, the unapproved minutes for January the 2nd, 2024. If you've had an opportunity to look at those, or if there are any changes that need to be made?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, under E, where, if you go kind of down there, it was where I nominated Andrew for the Cumberland Plateau. It says that I was actually appointed, so it was just a typo.
Did you make that correction, Mr. Lester?
Yes, yes, Chairman.
Any other, any other changes need to be made?
Yes, sir. On the January 31st, 2024, since we just got back late last night from legislation, I'll have to present the minutes at the next board meeting for the January 31st.
We'll defer those to the next one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, I'll accept a motion to approve these January 2nd, 2024 minutes.
Motion made to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Next item is, under the agenda, is the approval of expenditures. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over those. And we need a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Have a motion and a second from Mr. Hensley. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There aren't none. Next, we come down to the committee appointments on, for board consideration on the Fiddy, the Fenny Community Center, and I think it's yours, Mrs. Di.
It is, and I'd like to go ahead and reappoint Mr. David Compton and Mr. Edward Tiller.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion to reappoint both these gentlemen. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There aren't none.
Since I added this to the board appointments for the DSS, I'd like to make a motion to remove Jennifer Chumley from the DSS, and then I have, we'll go with two different motions, but I'd like to act on that one first, and then an appointment.
Have a motion, they have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
And I would like to appoint Sharon Owens in that position.
Okay. Second. Have a motion and a second on the appointment of Sharon Owens to fill that spot. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? Okay, now we have a couple that we bypassed last time, the Spearhead Trail Blazers. Does anybody have any appointments for those particular boards?
Mr. Chairman, before we appoint this, on any additional appointments, I think Mr. Kaiser had a statement to make on, on board appointments.
Well, I think it's a little bit for later, but we can go ahead and discuss it now, but what we'd like to see is for all current sitting board members or commission appointees to resubmit their applications. And anyone in the public who's interested in serving on a board or commission, to please submit their applications, because we're going to do a full review and restructure of, of all the boards and commissions in Russell County. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Kaiser?
We'll make that a motion.
You just made that motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to bypass the rest of these appointments, pending a review and submit all the new applications for all those slots. Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? It's unanimous? Right. We still down to, we're down now to the Cumberland Industrial Facility Authority, where, we had Mr. Tony Doty was on that, and he has submitted his letter of resignation, so we need to appoint somebody to fill that slot. They're here in nomination.
I'd like to nominate David Eaton.
I'll second.
Any further nominations? Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There aren't none?
On the second appointment, I'd like to nominate Steve Breeding. Since he is the chairman of the board, and that has been stated in our board before, that it was critical that the chairman serve in that capacity.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign? There aren't none? Okay, now, down to citizens' comment period, okay? I'll just remind you that we, Caleb is going to bring a list up here, and we'll try to go down the list by order of signature. And when you get to the podium, please state your name loudly and your address, please. Even though we have it listed here, there might be some people who are going to speak later on that will need that, okay? We need to, you need to understand, you have three minutes to make your point. We've got several people here, and I'm sure there's other people that would like to speak as well, so let's, let's get on this, and we'll try to, Mr. Lester is going to run the clock over here, and he'll let you know when your three minutes is up, so. Tommy Garrett. Tammy Garrett, sorry. Pardon me? Doesn't, doesn't matter. Come on, Amy.
I live in the flats in Castlewood. As a board member, you're elected to represent the people regardless of your personal beliefs and opinions. The increase in participation at the Board of Supervisors meetings and the informational meeting, despite being held at 5:00 p.m. on a workday, show that the citizens oppose this landfill. There's an 1,100-member Facebook group that opposes it. Steve, Dave, have you all tried to sell this as a recycling center? But I didn't hear one thing about a recycling center on Monday's meeting. Steve, you said the room wasn't even half full. How would you know? You weren't there. You said that many people came out of the meeting feeling good about the project. I didn't, and I know a lot of us didn't either. Did any of us leave the meeting feeling good about this project? I spoke with the Russell County Reclamations Claude Stacey on Monday after the meeting. Mr. Stacey was quoted in the newspaper as saying the landfill would be 30 acres with the possibility for expansion. But he told me it would be 100 acres. Already, the inconsistencies continue. I would like to read a quote from a news article in the Washington Post from November of 1998, which speaks about the King George landfill, was, was also mentioned by Mr. Hawke as one of his successful projects at Monday's meeting. "If trash is such a great deal, why aren't other states clamoring to import it?" asked Conway Moy, 49, a federal worker from King George County. "We just weren't sophisticated enough to realize we were being taken as fools." "If the host agreement we've seen is in any way close to the final agreement, which it's been refused to be shared, I have serious reservations about the county's competency to negotiate on our behalf." "Since Mr. Kilgore already represents Russell County Reclamations Claude Stacey in other legal matters, I think it would be a conflict of interest for him to be involved in negotiating the host agreement on behalf of our county." "If you vote yes on this landfill, then expect us, the citizens, to vote you out. If you vote no, whatever the repercussions are, we, the citizens, will stand by your decision. Nate and Tara, I know prior to getting elected, you said during your original public meeting that we had, that you would stand against the landfill, and I hope you're true to your word." So Steve, Dave, I'm going to turn my back on you the way you've turned your back on the citizens of this county. So dear fellow citizens, please keep coming out to these meetings.
Would you please speak into the microphone? We can't, we can't record your comments.
This is our home, our health, and our lives we're fighting for, and we are stronger together.
Thank you, Ms. Branson. Now, now Tammy. Tammy Garrett?
Tammy Garrett, 336 Russell Street, Lebanon, Virginia. We listened to Mr. Matney and his door-to-door landfill salesman, Mr. Hawke. We felt Mr. Hawke was condescending and dismissive of our concerns. Just because we cannot have an Amazon distribution center or a tractor supply does not mean we have to accept a landfill. By the way, who says that one day we can't have those businesses? Mr. Matney and his company have had the ear of the board and the county officials for years now. In some cases, such as Mr. Terry Kilgore, the board attorney, Mr. Matney has had more than an ear. Mr. Matney has donated $49,500 to Mr. Kilgore. While this may not be illegal, it is certainly unethical. During the six minutes I have had over the past two months to speak to the board, I have presented peer-reviewed research from impeccable sources, such as the NIH and the EPA, that clearly stated the many dangers of landfills and that the risks far outweigh the benefits. I do not recall a single board member even taking a note. The board has the power to say no to this landfill. We are asking the board for a referendum vote on this issue so that Mr. Breeding and all of the board, and all the board members, can hear from the 26,000 residents of this county who are opposed to this landfill. But wait, that number would be smaller, wouldn't it? Because some of the 26,000 residents are children who cannot vote, but their lives will be negatively impacted by this landfill. Do you, as board members, want to be responsible for 1,250 or more oozing acres of stinking, leaking, dangerous trash that will remain in our soil for eternity, causing known and unknown hazards? Because once it is done, it cannot be undone. Do you, Andrew Hensley? Do you, Tara Di? Do you, David Eaton? Do you, Rebecca Di? Do you, Nathan Kaiser? Want to be responsible when you lie down every night and say your prayers and get up in the morning and face this community, knowing you sold out our land, our air, our water, our health, our children, for the almighty dollar in exchange for an eternal mountain of trash?
Ms. Garrett, if you have information to submit to us?
I do.
Please submit it in a written form.
I have this information.
Great.
And it's from several different sources. I have highlighted the main points that I want you to follow through.
Sure.
I only have one copy, so I would like for you all to either make copies or share it. I do want you to read it.
Do you give it, Mr. Lester, please? Dana Tucker?
I'm going this way, sorry. Hi, my name is Dana Tucker. I'm from Mahoneacre. And I'm not positive, but I think you guys got to supply a place big enough for everybody to meet, because I don't think this is going to be the smallest amount you're going to see here in the future. And you got to give us a place to come in and sit down. I don't know why you're doing this landfill thing. Everybody up here is opposed to it. Nobody wants it. Nobody even knew about it. And you just tried to sneak it in under the carpet. And I just don't understand why. These are your neighbors. Y'all went to school with these people. Your daddies went to school with each other. I'm an outsider. I'm just looking on the outside, looking in. But I know you can give your opinion on whether you support this or not as board members. Your chairman did it. He went on a public podcast a month before the noise ordinance. Erroneous misinformation to the public had absolutely no idea what he was talking about. And this is not the individual I want to trust. Because he had no knowledge of that, I don't think he has any knowledge of this at all. And like my sister did, I'm going to turn my back on the ones that want anything to do with this. I support the citizens of Russell County that don't want this in your community.
Ben Price?
Benjamin Price, 510 Dillon Street, Cedar Bluff. Lonzo, you want to reset the clock? So the will of the people, the absolute undeniable will of the people, you're given the privilege to govern by the consent of the governed. I'm sorry, Steve, there's not 26,000 people here. It does appear we're a few short. For example, my son, in addition to being absent, is unable to articulate his thoughts because he's two. But it dawned on me that I have to trust you all the same way that my son has to trust me. Our vulnerabilities as citizens parallels that of small children. For example, my son is vulnerable to my actions or potentially irresponsible behavior. He's smaller than me and weaker than me. He has no power over me. I drive, if I drive too fast, text and drive, he doesn't have a choice. He's along for the ride. I'm here advocating on his behalf and on behalf of anybody else you want to say. The absolute will of the people. If you were willing to measure the will of the people, you would recognize how volatile the situation is that is sitting in your lap, the potential to affect this region for the rest of eternity, realize that you have reached the appropriate limit of your power, and start questioning your own authority and put this on a referendum for a vote. The overwhelming majority of registered voters in the localities which elected each of you to sit on this very board that can stop this do not want this. You all are intelligent people. I know that most of you realize that you will be replaced as soon as possible if you vote yes on anything that makes it possible for this to come into our community. What I don't understand is why you don't seem to care. So I challenge each of you all to vote to put this on a referendum. Obviously, you're not bound by it, but it gives us a choice and a chance to go on the record as saying no. Give us at least that. 26,000 is a joke. Because when this landfill fails, and if, for example, a train derails along the route to a destination deep in Appalachia that it never should have been headed to in the first place, it's going to affect millions, not 26,000. We'll be the laughing stock. It'll be our fault, your fault. Who cares about 26,000? I cannot guarantee that this landfill will cause us harm, and you cannot guarantee that it won't. The risk is great and entirely unacceptable. I pray that God will guide you, open your hearts to hear and feel our pleas. May God have mercy on each of you, Russell County, all of Southwest Virginia, and wherever the unknown depths of hell this controversial, community-dividing land may go. Thank you.
Roy Mayberry? Emery Breeding? Emery Breeding? Not here. Shawn Vance Jr. I can't read the first name. It's Dickinson, 980 Hurles Valley Road? Betty, is it Betty?
I'm Betty Dickinson, 1880 Hurles Valley Road, Castlewood. All evidence tells us that landfills eventually prove detrimental to the health and well-being of the environment and the people living near them. This is why historically, they're located in low-populated, low-income areas with few resources to fight against their creation. It's an insult that Russell County is now faced with the prospect of a large private land, landfill here. This past Monday night, the spokesman for the men and our landowners of the site at Clinchfield assured us that this landfill will be monitored for 30 years. They think that number should comfort us. We have long memories. 30 years, there's families in this county that have called the same land home for centuries. 30 years is nothing to us. I expected to pass on my Virginia century farm, which has been in the Dickinson family for much longer than 100 years, to my children and grandchildren. I'm now faced with the need to have a backup plan to sell it at lowered property values and move away for the health and safety of my family. I'm not alone in this. Many will leave Russell County if this come to pass. Hosting a large private landfill that brings in many tons of refuse daily by roadways and railways from various points in the United States does not make Russell County attractive. If you choose to allow this landfill, then shame on you and the previous board. That will be your legacy. Whether this landfill is built is up to you. That was stated clearly by Mr. Matney Monday night. You have that power. Your vote against this landfill will stop it. If you ignore the will of the people who elected you to your position by voting yea and allow this landfill, then we, the people, will actively work to see that by our efforts and with our votes, you lose your seat on this board and are unsuccessful in any other political position that you may seek.
Next is Timothy, is it McLanahan or McCallan or McLannahan? Okay.
McLannahan, 188, Sike Drive. Everyone of y'all knows what's down there. Every one of yous. You don't. I've hauled trash everywhere, and everywhere I've hauled it, they don't want it. Picking. I mean, and y'all going to put it down there on a refuge? You can put a pipeline in the ground. Three years later, you go back there, it ain't in the same spot. And that's not refuge. It's going to move. I don't care what kind of liner you put in it. It's going to leak. You're, I mean, y'all are our officials. We look for you to say no. So. Tara Di, you're, you're my supervisor. What do you say?
We're, this is not a question and answer period.
I wasn't talking to you.
With our, with our bylaws, I'm not allowed to answer, but let me.
But you're, you, you know what? You were voted in.
Right.
Listen, listen, you cannot, you're not going to antagonize.
Listen, when, when.
Please, let Ms. Di.
Okay, when we get done, I'll be glad to talk with you. We are in the process of changing. Well, if you'd just listen to me, I mean, that's quite rude. But we're, we are wanting to change our bylaws so that we can have this.
Listen, listen, no, listen, we're going to stop all this, and we're going to continue. Okay, we're going to continue on with public comment, okay? Next person is Kurt Sayers.
Kurt Sayers from Carbo, and I heard one person say that he didn't know why that this landfill was even being considered. Well, I know why it's being considered. And there was the most legitimate question that was asked Monday night. The feller wouldn't answer it, said it didn't deserve an answer. The question he asked, he asked in a pretty rough way. He wanted to know what kind of monetary funds handed under the table or whatever you all had received to get your vote. I read an email out there. I don't know Mr. Breeding. Said he had no idea if anybody in the county is this. I oppose it.
I never said that. You're, Ms., I've got it on my phone. Y'all claimed it took, I took it down. I did not take it down. I've got every word verbatim. Okay, now we're going to keep quiet. No comments from the audience. We'll have them removed, you know? We can, we can do this. So you go ahead, sir.
Before I run out of time, I want to make yous an offer. I'm sure all of yous have got a lot more money than I do. If you think this is a good idea, buy my buy my place over in Carbo. Buy it at assessed value, I'll sell it to you today. Monday night, I didn't, they said there was two of yous there. I don't know. The rest of yous should have been there. Someone said everybody come out happy and well-informed. I didn't come out happy and I didn't come out. What I came out with, I heard two truths told Monday night. I heard a whole lot of half-lies and half-truths. The first truth I heard may have been a truth you won't tell me. Mr. Mattney said that he'd been working with the Board of Supervisors and the IDA for six to eight years to get this done. The second truth I heard was what someone else already brought up. This area was picked because of low income and low population for a group of people that didn't have the money to fight it. That feller told a whole lot of lies and half-lies. This is some of the things I've read. He said that landfills make a natural habitat for our wildlife. This is what the studies say. Landfills destroy natural habitats. One of the most devastating products is leche, termed garbage juice. Concede through cracks and tear slowly, degrading the water quality of the region. And their harmful products of landfills is greenhouse gas emissions. He talked about the methane being emitted by the gob over there. Landfills emit methane. What are they gonna do with it? These emissions create and thrown off by bacteria breaking down the waste contribute to global warming and climate change. We hear about that on the news every day and we're just contributing to it if we do this. They say land, these liners last forever. I've seen a lot of plastic. I've seen tars that are probably-
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up. Let's give him another minute. I interrupted him. Give him another thirty seconds. All right. Sir.
This is some of the things that we get from the landfills. Smells. The landfill odors can travel for miles. Contaminated water, the leche, which they had no answer for where this was going to be processed. Where's the sewage treatments that are going to process it? And if they do process it, be reminded that this water is going back either into your rivers or into your kitchen for air quality. Land values suffer. That's why I'd like to sell you my property today because I know that the value of my house is gonna go down if it hasn't already. The stench, the health risk. Southwest Virginia has one of the highest cancer rates, not only in Virginia, but probably in the nation. We have the worst healthcare here. If you're concerned about, uh, the people, why not get better healthcare? The, the one other thing that I wanted to mention is I've done, lost a brother to cancer. My oldest daughter has went through cancer. And two of my neighbors have cancer. It's a terrible thing. If you all vote for this, you're voting against the lives of my children. I'm seventy-five years old and whatever cancer comes my way, I'll deal with.
Sir, you had to finish that.
I don't want to see my children have, I don't want to see another one of my children go through cancer. It's a terrible thing. I thank you and-
Thank you, sir.
I ask you to vote no.
Is it Charles King or Charles Ring Jr.? King? Okay.
Charles King Jr., I'm from, uh, 6961 Mountain Road, Belfast Community. Uh, I'm gonna speak to something I've heard nobody else speak to here, which is whatever goes in on this site, and it might not be a dump, it might be something else come, that, uh, citizens of Russell County don't end up responsible for having to pay for anything if it goes wrong. It's a numbers thing with me. And, uh, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Josh Burgess.
I'm Burgess, 87, Cleveland Road. That's Cleveland, Virginia, Russell County, Virginia. Not only that, it's southwest Virginia. And what is the greatest asset of Russell County? What is it? It's the people. The greatest asset of Russell County has are the people. If we all left Russell County today, what would happen? There'd be no Russell County. What would happen if our local government went absent for a month? The good people of this county would make sure this county kept moving. We would not turn our back on you. We would go forward the way it should be. And don't forget about the people, please. And I understand Russell County Board of Supervisors are holding a host agreement with Russell County Reclamation. There is a projected income written in there for Russell County. How could anyone calculate those numbers with no customer list, no commitments, no review on a rail study? Is this all based on a business plan? How many of you have ever seen a business plan fell on paper? Never, it won't happen. So this host agreement is nothing more but a blank sheet of paper. It has no value. For this proposed mega landfill, I'm out of order. I don't get it on paper. Okay. How much of the population will Russell County lose? How much of a decline in population does it take before we start losing our Walmarts, our financial institutions, our hardware stores, our mom-and-pop shops, our restaurants and our grocery stores? Will Russell County see a rise in medical treatment facilities due to the toxic environment the landfill will produce? And you, seems like, we don't know for sure, but it feels like the county is short on revenue. I don't know, we don't, I try to study the budget. I can't make any sense out of it. I know our focus is trash and our teachers. Why could we not put in a tax that is dedicated to our teachers and dedicated to our trash? I would be happy to pay that. I can't speak for everybody, but we don't need to set it up as a whole to where the county can absorb these funds. I would say dedicate a tax to our teachers and to our trash if we have a problem with it. And it is a blessing to send our trash to Blumble. We have got to protect this place because eventually the country will become toxic.
All right. Time's up, sir. Tony Smith.
I weren't gonna come back like I told you, but my sister told me I need to tell you who I am. My name's Tony Smith, 572 Egg Farm Road. I'm the nephew of a war hero, four-star general, the Japanese nation, you may have heard of them. They signed over to Philippines to my uncle. And another uncle I was named after, Louis Lee Wainwright. These are my biological people. Yes. Uh, the law industry was changed forever. You probably studied him in school. You probably know who Louis Lee, Gideon versus Wainwright. Well, now, and then we had all kinds of prison wardens and all like that. And then, uh, the latest I can say was my cousin was a star pitcher for the St. Louis Cardinals, Adam Wainwright. But the best one, I'm the most proud of, the one I'm the most proud of, is my grandfather Smith, Ballard Smith. He, dust was sp- like I said, I seen in front of my hands. He come before a board like this. Nah, ain't no dust over there. Went before the judicial system. No, 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 there ain't no dust over there. But just like Louis, who went to the Supreme Court and lost, my grandfather won because he was for the people. And I'm for the people. I ain't against none of y'all, but Lord have mercy, trash us out. I have to look at, I mean, I'm looking down on this trash dump. I'm looking down on it. But that's a history of me and, I mean, I can go somewhere, uh... I stayed in my uncle's, uh, when I go down to Florida, I stay in his million and a half dollar, 1.7 million dollar guest house. Got live entertainment. I enjoy that, but everybody here can't get away from this trash. And what does fifty thousand dollars get you, I wonder? Well, you know, in that situation. But here, I've got a piece of paper here. In 2009, where you gonna put this dump? Water around it was a tenth worst in the nation. Tenth worst in the nation. And you gonna put this in there? Uh, and I'll say, I built some ponds, sixteen-foot deep, hundred by hundred. Just was rain from the sky, a little bit of runoff water. They filled up in two months. That's two ponds now. So you could say one pond filled up. How long you think this, if no leakage coming out, where you think that water's gonna go? That goes into the trash dump? Look at it logically. Are you, are you no way around it? You can't beat it. It, it's true. It's gonna happen. The water's gonna spill in there and it's gonna seep over. I don't know. It, it's unbelievable, mate. This is a big town. We've been mustard gassed, we've been, I'll be done quickly. Mustard gassed, we've been paraplanted, we've been preparation planted, we've been mountain olive, and then we're getting ready to be trash dumped again. So when is Cleveland, are we the Palestinians of Russell County? Yes, four-star general.
Christine Codell. He's, he's bringing a new microphone up there for you.
Okay. Is it ready?
Hey, give Crystal a reset on the clock.
Christina Codell, and I live at 140 Fletcher Drive in Castlewood. I, if the Board of Supervisors want to save face with the community at this point, I do strongly suggest forming a committee of Russell County citizens that can review and help revise parts of the host agreements. Due to the statistics of landfill disasters across the country, we are all concerned at the potential effects that alone should, I mean, that the potential effects that it's gonna have on us. We rely heavily on agriculture. You know, that should be taken into consideration. Geologically speaking, this specific site does pose a threat to all of Russell County. And it's gonna leak into Wise County as well. And the men that have worked in those mines, they know what is under that mountain. They know of the natural springs. I myself have firsthand knowledge of that growing up on that mountain. And bringing in an outside source to convince us of anything different is just a slap in the face. You know, um, our representatives have a duty to listen to our logical concerns and let us have a voice as our representatives. You have a duty to protect our environment and preserve our health and livelihood, especially for our children. And our children is an investment I have yet to see from this county.
What was your name again?
Christina Codell. If you would like my maiden name, it was Kaiser.
Denver Ray. Denver Ray. Oh, there you are, I'm sorry.
Bring it on, brother. My name is Denver Ray, and it's 107 Coal Lane, Cleveland, Virginia. But I live in the heart of south, uh, South Clinchfield. I live on the hill where I can overlook all of this. Back in 1971, we started a landfill at Kaiser Field at Carbo. Well, seems like everything that we've ever tried to do to stop leakages, it hasn't worked. As a matter of fact, the garbage dump is still leaking. You can prove that by lots of luster. It runs out in the ditch. They're right at the front of the, the old trash dump. And Clinchfield found out about all this and they made them move the dump. And they moved it down on 71. Getting back to the story. On the Big Slate Dump, there's three graveyards and possibly one Indian graveyard. There is two graveyards where you turn in at Kaiser Ball Field, the old Kaiser Ball Field. And the leakage has to come out into the road all the way from there. Now, under the stra- the, the slate dump itself, the refuge, there is probably a four or six-foot pipe runs plum to the head of the holler. And at every holler that springs off, there is a hole in that pipe so the drainage can come out of that pipe and come out. Well, if you put a landfill up there, somewhere along the line, that water is gonna leak out and it's gonna go down through that and it's gonna come out of those pipes and it's gonna come out in Channing Creek, which dumps into, to Dumps Creek, which dumps into the river. I mean, there's, there's no way that you could stop it because water is gonna run regardless. It's like when they, they, they closed Moss 2 and, uh, up there, they went in there and redone all of that and all that water that was in Moss 2 runs out over in Wilder into the creek. So that tells you water can go through just about anything if it has to. And I want to thank you all. And nevertheless, there is Indian graveyards all over that place. And also at the Coal Springs between Carbo and Clinchfield, there was an old fort and it was called Dumps Creek Trading Post. And that's one reference that we can't overlook. That we've got some historical places that don't need to be destroyed.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. Jared Ring.
Before I begin, I have a printout for each board member. Jared Ring, Castlewood, Virginia. It's been repeatedly said that modern landfill liners don't leak. That is demonstrably untrue. The packet I just gave the board contains details of a federal study conducted by the EPA. That study found that even under the best circumstances, all landfills leak. The GMCCL type proposed for the Moss 3 landfill ran middle of the pack on leakage rates. How many gallons of leche ending up in the clinch is acceptable? If any member of this board believes that any number other than zero is acceptable, I would encourage you to resign. Our own chairman has implied with correspondence with the public that modern landfills are the- the safest way to store waste, and that's why he supports this one. But I must encourage you all to question, when you hear any information about this landfill, does this person have reason to mislead or lie to me? Mattany and Hawk certainly do. They stand to profit from it. Please look into this yourselves, and don't just accept what you're told about the landfill by people who have reason to lie. Everything I just gave you is directly from the EPA, there are no words of mine in it. Their website is a great place to start looking into landfills yourselves, free from bias, from us or Mr. Mattany. Hosting a regional landfill to save money on disposal is like shooting yourself in the foot to save money on shoes. It, it is a simple matter of risk versus reward. The risk of damage to the local economy as a whole is not worth the benefit we might receive from what amounts to a single business. The whole local economy for a single business. Mattny's not gonna walk away from his other investments and projects simply because you told him no on one proposal. Who wants to put a cement plant right beside a landfill anyway? Jobs are good, but not when they're literally garbage. Hawk also admitted to me that there is nothing stopping them from expanding beyond the original thirty acres. He told me that on Monday's meeting, that they can expand again, propose another expansion whenever they'd like. So I'd like to ask each of you to do the right thing for your citizens and vote against any host agreement put before you. Mr. Hensley and Ms. Di were at the meeting, I thank you for that. You saw how the public feels about this. But i- it's obvious to anybody that's been watching this that the majority of the public is against it, and I would encourage you all to just listen to the public. Russell County was getting along just fine before this was proposed, relatively speaking. Uh, and i- it's all right to just walk away from it. More opportunities will come, but not if this landfill goes in.
Thank you. R.D. Sneed. Where's R.D.?
Mr. Brady and board members, Mr. Lester, Mr. Kilgore, thank you for having this meeting and, um, listening to all the good folks here from the county. I'm gonna get right to it. I, I wanna first say, I appreciate the job that, uh, the Board of Supervisors has to do. It's obviously the most important board in the county, and I know it's a lot, it's tremendous amount of responsibility. I also know that you guys are charged with the responsibility of maintaining sovereignty for the county and for trying to constantly create new revenues. And I know that's not an easy task, and we just have to always keep working at it. I also understand that, um, basically any property owner has the right to try and develop their property. That's just, uh, a good thing in this county, in this country, and I, I understand and appreciate that. I've been, um, trying to look at both sides of this issue for months since I first heard about, uh, you know, what, what we might be looking at. I've talked to an awful lot of smart people, a whole lot smarter than me, and I've learned a lot. And I still don't know much, but I, I've learned a lot more than I knew before. And, um, I have to say that, that I, uh, have, have concluded that, um, due to concerns for some of the things that's been mentioned here today, and also I just cannot convince myself in my mind that the landfill is in the best long-term, and I'm, I'm talking twenty-five, fifty years, whatever, uh, interest of the county. Now, obviously, if we run into a situation where we don't have anywhere to take our trash in a reasonable fashion, obviously, we don't want everybody having a mile-high trash pile in their backyard. You know, we gotta, we gotta figure something out. My, my, I guess, the answer to that is, um, the property's gonna be there, I think, probably, for a while. Uh, and obviously, if that happens, we've gotta look at whatever options we, we can find available. But I wanna, I was, I was taught, uh, by my dad, that when you're dealing with a situation, issue, or a, uh, project, or there's some good stuff in it, but two sides just are butting heads, they can't, they can't come together, I realize ultimately it's your all's decision. But I was taught to try to figure out a way not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And for me, what I mean by that is, um, there's some good stuff that's been mentioned by, by county officials and, uh, the property owners. Uh, that, that pad is a beautiful two hundred and thirty-two acre pad. That's a wonderful opportunity to create jobs. I believe we can, we can work on doing that. Uh, in fact, I don't know if for the property owners, if this is a all or nothing deal, or it might be some or something deal. But I would hope that they might still be interested, since they're still gonna own the property, to help us. Um, I think they would have the ability to make contacts with people that might be interested in doing something on that site. Uh, they mentioned the shale, I find that fascinating. Uh, also, uh, trails have been mentioned, and I'm, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for that. It's my understanding, and I'm not saying this critically, it's just my understanding that there's only about ten miles of trails in Russell County.
R.D., you're gonna have to hurry and finish it.
Okay. And just think what would happen if, say, for example, we had the opportunity either on our own or in some partnership with the property owners to develop two or three hundred acres. I understand there's some trails already on there that, you know, you, you could kinda work with, but certainly the development cost would be handable, and I think, I can't swear to this, but I think people like the Spearhead Trails would be interested in, in working on that. So I'm just gonna simply, um, hush and say that, that I, I would just respectfully suggest that you folks, uh, look at that as, as an option, and I appreciate you giving me your time.
Thank you, R.D. Matthew Cassidy. It's Matthew Cassidy.
Matthew Cassidy, uh, Lebanon, Virginia. First off, I will say that I'm against this landfill. Landfill isn't the answer because we're not providing a good, but rather just becoming a storage of unwanted material from other places that have no concern or thought for this county area or the people that live in it. I'll also say that I believe that tourism is also not the answer, and it is an admission of defeat by the county that this area can no longer provide anything. It would be turning our towns into museums and putting us under glass, essentially stagnating, becoming a bunch of roadside attractions to let people come and gawk at, as a hollow husk of what once was. What we need, we do need is industry, and that is clear. Industry bring, brings dr- uh, jobs. Not only that, but it produces goods that we can export, and the production and export of goods is what drives growth. And that's what we need for this county and region as a whole, is growth. There is, uh, certainly resources in the ground, I've looked it up, we've got iron, coal, sulfur, gypsum, mag- manganese, and, you know, there's other resources I didn't list. And outside of ground resources, we also have abundance of cattle, as everybody knows. The board, I believe, needs to expand their horizons and be bold and think outside the box of what can be done, possibly instead of constantly trying to invite industry, has constantly been proven unreliable, unwilling to help us and simply leach off of us, as you know, you know, the, uh, the industrial site over near Walmart, it's full of empty projects. I believe that we possibly should create our own industry that has roots in this area and interest in seeing the area prosper and be built up and expand outward instead of inviting inward. That's all.
Thank you. Sherri Patton. Sherri Patton.
Hello, uh, my name is Sherri Patton, and I live in Hansonville. And I don't have a whole lot to add to what y'all have already heard here today. Um, I think it's pretty obvious that there is overwhelming opposition to this landfill. And I guess what I wanna know is at what point does the board take into consideration the will of the people y'all represent, rather than the few people who are poised to financially benefit from the landfill? I'm not seeing anybody in here who thinks that this is a great idea. And like many people have said, y'all represent us, y'all are the ones that are gonna have to take the repercussions if you vote for this because then we will also vote the way our hearts feel. Another gentleman in here said that the greatest asset of Russell County was its people, which I agree with. I think the second greatest asset of Russell County is the natural beauty here. I mean, there are very few places in the country, and I have lived all over this country, there are very few places in the country that, that put a candle to Russell County. And, you know, I just, I would love to see the board put its time and energy into projects that will increase the beauty of Russell County and benefit the people who live here. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody on the list. I'm gonna take a few more people. Michelle Vance. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This George Campbell, I am from Castlewood, I'm in Luann's district. I'd just like to say, Lou, if you're watching, our prayers go out to you and Bill. I mean, I, I went to school with Lou, I know she's got a good heart, and, uh, I do feel for him. I've been a blessed man all my life, and, uh, one thing I was blessed to see was the top of that mountain before it was touched. I helped clear the timber off that for Clinchfield Coal Company back in the late seventies, early eighties. Don't remember exactly the year. But something kept bothering me about those two big ponds up there, and I asked the gentleman about it. He's, oh, there's no springs up there. Well, I know for a fact there is at least two because I drank out of that spring when I was clearing that timber back in those days. What goes up must come down, what comes in must go out. I mean, that water is filling up those ponds, and it's going to leak out of there. That's one thing. Also, it's the cemetery's in the area, that's two strikes. Where there was mentioned about the earthquake faults, there's one runs right through the middle of there, that's three strikes. I mean, how many more? Plus the people, that's four strikes against this. I, I'm firmly against it, I don't think anything good has ever came from a landfill, no matter how many tax dollars the county gets. We can come up with something else, we're smarter than that. Let's, let's leave it, let's leave this land for our children. An old Indian saying is, you don't get Mother Earth from your parents, you, you, it's on loan from your children, and we need to stick to that, and that's, that's what I've got. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Michelle.
Michelle Vance, Willow Springs Drive. Um, I'm gonna pivot a little bit, get off the Moss Three for a second here. Uh, I am here, and I'm gonna go to the Board of Education meeting as well and tell them this as well. We recently just had a over, not even overwhelming snow, but we had some snow. I have seven grandchildren here in Russell County who go to school, and they were out for almost two weeks. I think that's a bit much. I'm coming up here to speak because I know that you all don't make the rules for the Board of Education or anything, but as my representatives, and mine already knows because I've already talked to them, I think you all should know, and you should all put some pressure on the Board of Education as well. There needs to be some other kind of plan, instead of shutting down every single school in the county. I understand that some areas like Swords Creek and everything gets more snow than what I do down at Moccasin, or, you know, thi- things of that nature. But I know, like, here in Lebanon, there was no reason for them to be out of school. I have a special needs granddaughter, um, who, learning virtually, might as well forget about it. It's, she just cannot learn that way. She has dyslexia, and she's lost two weeks of school now. And there just has to be a different way. Um, I've already talked to one board mem- member, Mr. Eaton, I know he's here, uh, from the Board of Education, and I will speak to the rest of them, but I hope, coming here, that you all will talk to everyone on the Board of Education as well and come up with a better plan for these kids, because there's no reason for them to, to miss that much school. I mean, we've all heard it from our grandparents and our parents, I walked uphill both ways to and from school. Uh, you know, snow, rain, sleet, hail, whatever. There's no reason that they shouldn't have been in school, at least that last week. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. Lynn Hess.
Lynn Hess, one thirty-seven Oakland Road, Swords Creek, Virginia. First of all, I'd like to start off with saying thank you, David Eaton, for our Swords Creek Community Center. Uh, it has been a wonderful blessing to our community and utilized greatly. I'd also like to thank David Eaton, Steve Brady, and for standing all these years that we had a different board for Pro-Life, uh, Sanctuary, Two A, Keeping Taxes Low, and then generally just standing against the liberali- liberal- liberalogy of, of people that wants to come in and roughshod our government and, and keeping our county a conservative county. I'd also like to encourage all the board that just got elected to stick to your conservative values that we voted you in for. Uh, it's very important that we stick to this. As far as the landfill, I live on the other end of the county, I live up next in Swords Creek, uh, near the Raven area, but I don't want a conventional landfill in our county either. Uh, I just think it would be bad for our county. I know that this land was permitted for refuge back many years ago, and there's not a whole lot that Russell County Board can do about it. But I know, also know that David Eaton was working on a, uh, project that would've took all of our trash and would've had it recycled. He even went to Servileville and looked at a plant down there that would recycle everything, had businesses standing in line to buy all these products and use them and take the trash right back out of the county. But our old board voted it down and threw David Eaton off of every board. So if I was gonna be upset at anybody, as this public, I'd be upset at the old board members that's gone now for why they did that. He had an excellent plan for trash, he was looking ahead and seeing that this was coming. I would also encourage our public to go after our state legislators that makes the rules and sets the permits down. This permit has been in effect for many, many years, it needs to be relooked at, it needs to be gone through, it needs to be seen if this is proper, proper for Russell County, in which I do not think that turned it into a trash landfill would be the correct way to go. Now, when we was reclaiming coal out of it, it was wonderful thing. It made a beautiful piece of land, made revenue for the county, gave, uh, uh, Virginia City something to burn to make our electricity off of, wonderful. But now they're wanting to turn it into trash, which all falls under the same heading, and I think that needs to be changed. Get a hold of your Virginia state legislation and see if it can't get that changed, or talk to the company that's wanting to put this in and let them know that you disagree with this and you don't want it in your hometown or in your county. Thank you all for all the jobs you do, thank you all of you that just got elected to the board. Stay strong, may God blessings.
Thank you, Lynn.
First of all, I just wanna say thank you for giving me an opportunity to get up here and speak.
Name and address.
My name is John Young Long, I live at thirteen sixty-five Booker Road in Castlewood. I've been a citizen of Russell County for all my life, of nearly fifty years. I grew up near the previous Russell County landfill and witnessed many things that the community should be aware of. My childhood, I would say, was a little different because of the things I encountered, much of which was landfill related. For example, there were many days and nights I would hear my father speaking to the community about his concerns to the county landfill and watching him put up a fight to stop the landfill only to, only to lose. He even had an environmental intern from Virginia Tech to stay with us one summer to do research, which at no time could provide any supportive evidence proving landfills were not harmful to communities. I have seen and heard the same song and dance as liners will not leak, don't worry, everything is safe, and many other self-pitches, which to the best of my knowledge are not true. During this past week, a friend told me that I could view the last meeting concerning the landfill proposal on the internet, and being interested in what was actually said, I decided to tune in. I decided to tune in. What I heard was erroneous statements, just like I heard years ago. For example, the county will not be responsible for any cost. The old Russell County landfill continues to produce leachate even years and years after the closure, and we as citizens are responsible to take care of it. Do we want to ha, or do we want to leave the same problem for our future generations? We all should want what's best for our children and grandchildren, and that is to leave things in as good or better shape than we found them. Furthermore, the company involved states that the majority of the revenue will come from trash delivered to, to the site by rail. I spoke to Norfolk Southern personally last week, and was told they were not aware of anyone making requests of rail services for this purpose. Not only that, but we all know that coal is the main reason for the railroad in this area, and that the production has drastically decreased from years in the past. If the railroad decided to no longer utilize or keep the tracks in service, how would that affect the revenue that is being promised? Since I don't have much time, I want to get straight to the point. What you're not being told is that the leachate can be acidic, which can result in eating away at the metal liners or welds used to connect the liners. I've read that the United States Environmental Protection Agency has stated the barriers will ultimately fail, while sites remain threats for thousands of years, suggesting that modern landfill designs delay but do not prevent ground and surface water pollution. We are also being told that no hazardous waste will be allowed into the landfill, but no one can guarantee it. In other words, each bag of trash, each box and/or container will not be examined because time is money, and the quicker it can be unloaded and covered, the faster the tons will add up for payment. Companies will tell you anything to get their way because they cannot see past the dollar signs. Another example is we are told pipelines are safe, and there is no danger of them causing harm. How many times have we seen massive explosions caused by gas lines that have leaked? They're made of steel, so how is it possible for them to leak? If anyone really listened to the gentleman from Florida, he was saying the only way for Russell County to generate revenue is through the landfill, as if there is no other options. Tell that to the Handys Market, Bonanza, Walmart, Lebanon Block and Supply, tell that to Samuel or to other businesses in this county. There again is not, this, this is not about the county, but about the amount of money that is going to be made by the individuals pushing this landfill. He also insinuated that the county, if the county doesn't accept this landfill, then we will have to pay more taxes, which sounded to me much like blackmail. Another thing to mention is that the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four edition of the Lebanon News, an article was published stating that Russell County is to receive one point two million dollars for the purpose of such things as helping grow communities, improve the quality of life, all which a landfill will not do. Not to mention that, but the article states that the funding creates a way to use old mine, mine lands for new and existing purposes, or exciting purposes. I have not spoken to one person that thinks that turning the old mine into a landfill is exciting, and I don't think that I ever will. What I'm trying to say is that there are other ways to bring businesses in Russell County, other counties have done it, and so can we. Lastly, do we want to be known as, as Russell County, a beautiful and wonderful place to live, or Russell County, home of one of the world's largest landfills?
Time's up.
Real quickly, and for the board members, do you want to be remembered as that, as people that stood up and did the right things for the community, the citizens of Russell County, or remembered by your greed and ignorance? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? Mr. Christian.
I'm Ross Christian, I reside in a big city section of Russell County. I served on the board here for four years as supervisor-at-large, representing all the citizens of Russell County. Some as stated, about twenty-six thousand, that's the number I come up with, and each vote and each decision I made while on that board, I try to consider what was best and right for the citizens of Russell County. And when we were campaigning for this past election, I put a newspaper, I put on Facebook that I was against this landfill. The first meeting I attended in nineteen ninety-two was because of landfill down for seventy-one, and it got me to the first board meeting, and I've attended many of board meetings since then. And I am against this landfill. Well, I was at the meeting the other night, and I told them, I said, let the people have a voice, put the issue on the ballot, and I say seventy-five to ninety percent of the citizens of Russell County will vote no for this landfill. So consider what is best for the citizens, not the almighty dollar, because the citizens, taxpayers, I pay about four thousand dollars a year just real estate taxes, and I would hate to think that that was just cash aside, that money has been, my tax dollars have been spent for something, and I hope it ain't gonna be spent for anything like this. We are gonna have to do something, in my understanding, with our trash. Our contract, I understand, is gonna end in the near future with Tennessee, we're gonna have to come up with something, some way to dispose of our trash, but that doesn't mean that we have to open up Russell County for all the other counties in Virginia, or the states in the United States. So strongly consider this, and let's work to put this on the ballot, and give the citizens of Russell County a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. J.J. You next.
Know that we have started meeting with the Board of Supervisors Budget Committee every month, so every budget meeting that we have, we include the Board of Supervisors. Uh, I think that's very important for transparency, so we can work together, because we do have a big, big problem, as you all know, everybody knows, with, with our teachers' salaries. I know the county, uh, is not a high-tax-based county like other counties, uh, that are adjacent to us. Uh, I know this is gonna be a hard process, but I want to let the public know that we are working on it. I appreciate this board for being transparent and helping us work on it. To my understanding, that the last board very rarely ever met in four years with the school board. So now that we have a new board that are open to us, and we are open to them, maybe we can get this issue under control. But I want to, um, I want to stress to you all that any, all the other surrounding counties at the moment, for the next two to three years, are not planning any type of base raise to their teachers. That doesn't mean that they're not getting the state or federal income, uh, the raises the two, the three, and maybe the seven that the state is proposing, but the actual localities are not proposing any new raises. So I encourage you all to, to look and see what we can do together. Uh, if we can give any, any type of raises here in the near future, uh, that would, that would give us the ability to catch up with our localities, and that's what we need to do, is, uh, at least get competitive with other counties, uh, so we can hopefully retain teachers that has left and, and keep the ones that we've got. But I want to thank you guys, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Burke.
Randy Burke, Lebanon, Virginia. I just wanted to come up first of all, just wanted to say, last month, when I thought y'all was over the Sheriff's Department, I said something about them, been to many of them at Pizza Town, I want to apologize to the Sheriff's Department, because they were out there after a school shooting, uh, meeting, there's all the resource officers. So I will publicly apologize, I publicly done them in last month, I want publicly apologize this month. So another thing, I will speak a little bit on the landfill, because I don't want it. We gotta get rid of our trash somewhere. If I was blunt, well, I wouldn't want Russell County trash, I wouldn't want nobody's. I don't want Ohio's, Tennessee, or, I don't want anybody, I don't want Rhode Island's and our little bitty state. I don't want anybody else's trash, but I, it's our responsibility to take care of ours like it's their responsibility to take care of theirs. That's my only thing, is we don't need to bring somebody else's in here, but we gotta do something with their own. We gotta do something with Russell County trash, not depend on somebody else that's having the same meeting saying, we don't want Russell County's trash, we need to deal with it. As far as the liner goes, you know, I had a guy tell me this week, this TV stand over here, that this thing's hanging on, that might be the best TV hanging device that man can buy. I mean, it's a good one, it's holding the whole weight of that TV up, but you know what? It's only as good as the man that puts the screws in the wall. If that thing, if, if he ain't do, they can make a liner perfect, it won't leak. But if that guy's sealing his cracks together in the liner, or vulcanizing the two liners together, I, I, I've lost guys for years. I know I had to watch them like a hawk, because they wouldn't do what they were supposed to do. If that guy doing that vulcanization ain't doing what he's supposed to be doing, we gotta leak. So unless you're gonna have somebody right there on top of them inspecting what they expect, you know, there can be a problem. So, no, liner may be perfect, the liner may not leak, but what's your employees gonna do that's doing that? You know, they come in hungover or whatever, so we can have a problem. I mean, I agree you can't guarantee the liner, but we could have a problem over there.
Thank you. State your name and lo, address.
Uh, my name's Robert Chaflin, I live in Cleveland, Virginia, Ivy Ridge Road. Everybody here says they don't want a trash dump in their backyard, I don't want it in my front yard. I can see this place from my front porch, and you can't tell me I'm not gonna smell it. I'd have liked to been up there to talk to that feller, but I seen that guy on, I watched it on Facebook, and he's the greatest salesman I've ever seen, he probably could sell air conditioners to Eskimos, but he ain't gonna sell this to me. Okay? He says that this train is gonna bring trash in, and when he was asked how long is it gonna sit there on that train, he wouldn't answer. He said until they got it unloaded. I don't know if he'd seen the area, but the train tracks down there at the bottom of that hill. It's down there beside the place where the old preparation plant was, he, prep plant was, and he said, the other businesses gonna move in there? Ain't nobody gonna move in there if a train loaded trash sitting beside them, nobody wants that. I'm telling you, we voted you in, and if you don't vote the way the people want, there, this room, there's another room out there full of people. I don't know if y'all can see it, there's people standing outside. How many people here, by raising your hand, want this landfill? How many people don't want this landfill by raising your hand? Look at that. Only takes ten percent of the public, from what I've read on the internet, to get a recall election. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? State your name and address, please.
Good morning, Steve. I'm Sophie Chaflin Vance, I'm Ben Chaflin's daughter and the daughter-in-law to Tip Vance from Ivy Ridge, Cleveland, Virginia. My family showed up in Russell County record boards, record books in seventeen ninety-two, and the Vance family came in the early eighteen hundreds. It is obvious that I am invested in this county. I chose to come back after college and raise my children here. I didn't plan to speak today, however, the offensiveness that came Monday night describing us as poor, podunk, uneducated idiots has brought two-roomfuls out of your neighbors. We do need more money, but we don't want to see, we want to see our funds. I personally want to see them in our schools, where the future of this county right now is being neglected. Our teacher salaries are at the bottom of the barrel, and our buildings are decrepit. The last school building in our county was built in nineteen eighty-six. Many of you may not remember, but that was done by a specific tax that was on our vehicles that you paid, I believe it was ten dollars or fifteen dollars. Seeing all of us here should make everyone respect your neighbor, but also make you feel like the villagers have their pitchforks out. It is very concerning what is happening in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Jennifer.
Jennifer Chumbly, seven six five Egg Farm Road, Cleveland, Virginia. And I wanted to speak about one thing, I know that you guys are gonna look at doing something for, uh, I guess a letter of recommendation for our AEP rates. However, we need to remember that we vote in right people that sit on those SEC boards that make real changes. Now, as far as the landfill goes, our elders are telling you no, there's elders out here that have been here that made Russell County. They're telling you no, and I know you guys are saying that we can't tell a private business no, but we can, we can tell them no. We've done this before. Nate Kaiser stood up here in one meeting and said that if the board done right, no matter the laws, no matter what the laws was, we would be behind you. And that's true, you stood here. So we will stand behind you if you do what's right. Right is right, wrong is wrong. We're tired of the constant battle with our local leaders, we don't want a battle. It shouldn't be this way. You should be providing us with information. I mean, we are the, the host, as you say, and we do have the contract with Podesta. It is Russell County that is in that contract, not John Mattney, not Russell County Reclamation. If this landfill project was such a great idea, then it wouldn't have been hidden from us, I feel like. It would be shown to us, show us the documents. But it's a bad deal for our citizens, I feel like, and that's why it's been kept secret. And that's why my last FOIA request, well, not the last one, the one before that got denied. The board does have the power to stop an industry that is not good for our communities, you've proven that. You've proven that with ordinances in the past. You have proved that over and over. Right now, my small town of Cleveland is already suffering from just the cleanup of Moss Three. I mean, we're great, we're, we're happy it's being cleaned up, but our hills are already turning black from just the gob being hauled out, our roads are already getting black. We already have to follow trucks, and if we continue to follow these trucks, we're gonna be late for our appointments. I mean, there is nowhere to pass anyone on Cleveland Mountain, you are stuck. You know, if you're gonna follow these trucks across this mountain, then you are stuck following them all the way. I have a video of my property, if, you know, if you don't believe me, on the black hillside, and I overlook this property too, I'm actually higher than it, I will smell it. The buzzards roost on our cliff line. Now, let's imagine that, you know, you see all these landfills out in northern California, wherever, they have seagulls. We're gonna have buzzards, that's what, that's what's gonna be on our landfill. We're gonna have buzzards, the wildlife will carry the trash. We know this, because there was a, there was a trash dump right in front of that. You guys moved that because it wasn't a good location. You couldn't keep the bears out with fences, you couldn't keep the raccoons out, you couldn't keep the coyotes out, no animals were kept out of that landfill, and they scattered that trash everywhere. I'm sorry, not landfill, trash convenience center. You looked at me funny. Trash convenience center, you know, bears had to be euthanized due to their eating of trash and due to people petting them. I mean, this happened right there, that's where this location will be. So all in all, I guess I'll close out, our small community doesn't deserve this again, we don't. The folks that were in the room the other night, that so many had come, that so many that have come out to meetings have talked to us, I get hundreds of messages a day, there is nobody that is in favor of this landfill that I've spoken to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Mike, come on in.
Doctor Michael Ray, thirty-three seventy Ivy Ridge Road, Cleveland, Virginia. My house is within five minutes of this, of the Moss Three tipple. You know, he's talking about in the front yard, it literally is in my front yard. And I sat there last night till one o'clock in the morning, going through YouTube, just looking at landfills and stuff. You know, over ninety percent of them right there, when you sat there and you looked at them, they were out in la-la lands, weren't they, was no houses anywhere, nowhere around. But there's a lot of houses there in South Clinchfield. There's a lot of homes here in South Clinchfield. You know, Steve, you was the engineer and stuff right there, helping us do, put water lines and stuff up through there. You know, the, the leachate coming out of the old landfill right there eat through that ductile iron pipe two or three times, and we ended up having to replace the whole line due to the leachate eating that iron pipe. So this is gonna be coming out and, in, into our area, it's gonna be coming down into Dumps Creek, I don't care what they say, it's gonna be coming out, coming down the mountain, coming in through there, and leaking out into Dumps Creek, which is gonna be going into Clinch River. You know, not only is our area gonna have troubles, but all the way down the line, all the way down the Clinch River. You know, please, I ask you, I ask you, as a professional that's been in this business and in this county for sixty-some years, you know, my home is here, my family's here, all of South Clinchfield is up through here, there's a lot of homes up in South Clinchfield that, when the tipple was running, I had coal dust on my front yard and on my yard and my house, everywhere you could go, I couldn't seal it out. You know, now that the tipple's gone, the, the air's kinda cleaning up, the dust is cleaning up, now you're gonna put in a landfill? The smell's gonna be even worse. All the way back valley, that smell and that wind goes up back valley, and it'll go all the way to Holacre. And these people aren't really understanding, even into Holacre, you're gonna have trouble, because that air and stuff goes up the valley through there, and it's gonna cause problems. I, I asked over there tonight, you know, about the, the trains coming in, you know, dumping, you know, the track, how they gonna get it up the top of the hill, you gotta bring it in, you gotta dump it, so it's gonna be down here at the bottom of the hill, and before they can truck it up, or how are they gonna build it up to the top of the hill, going back over into the middle floor? You know? You know, the trash is gonna be there. It ain't gonna be sealed. It ain't gonna be locked out, but it's gonna be sealed. And I ask you, as a concerned citizen and as a friend, please do everything you can to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're about to run out of time here, but I'm gonna take, yes ma'am, you raised your hand before. I'll take a couple more.
I'm Teresa Perkett. I live, uh, on Long Halla Road. I spent most of my life in, right in the middle of Cleveland. That's where I grew up. That's where my family is. That's where my family still lives. I'm not for this landfill. I'm trying to look at both sides, but I'm struggling with it. And this comment, people getting up telling you what they think, that's fine and dandy. But what I'd like to request is that we have a question and answer. I want you to talk to me. I want you to tell me what you're thinking. You know, I, you can give me three minutes. I'm trying, I'm not gonna take that. But, you know, I want, I want you to talk to me. I think I deserve that, don't you? I, I just want you to talk to me, and I want us to work together. I've lived here all my life. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. Some of you's part family. It's okay if you don't wanna admit it. But, uh, I, I just want you to talk to me and, and give me that opportunity. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Take one more. Going, going. Gone. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close public comment period. Okay. Thank you all for all your comments. We appreciate it. Any constitutional officers here? I don't think so. Okay. Not on Saturday or not, you know? County attorney? No reports from the county attorney. Okay. Okay. It's up to the county administrator. Go ahead and proceed with your, uh, list.
Thank you, Chairman. First on the county administrator reports and requests for the February twenty-twenty-four is, uh, which we just got back late yesterday afternoon, from the VACO legislative meeting. Of course, our attorneys, everyone, I think, uh, was here. So, um, the board supervisors, you know, it was a fast-paced time over a three-day period that they had listened to, you know, the VACO and what, and the legislators of what laws that have come, are coming up before us today. Uh, the teachers' raises was one of them. And of course, their sales tax and they're still negotiating through it, you know? Of course, our attorney sits, you know, on, on the House of Delegates. So, uh, this is the opportunity that, um, the board during this time, during the legislation and during the VACO meetings, uh, one of the most important things was, of course, the, um, we had set issues to deal with in public safety. Uh, TDOs, EDOs, if those are temporary detention orders, and, and we had to work with also, we also talked to them about the high utility rates. So, that was the biggest, that was one of the big ones in most of the counties. So, it was a big topic. So, they are proactively working on it. You will see that in the agenda. We, we did a resolution back in December on this. And since then, actually, Russell County was the first to allocate. I don't know who put in here that Dixon County was, but anyhow, they actually borrowed ours to do theirs. So, we were the first ones to allocate. So, we put it back in for the amendment because we've got more data and up, up-to-date details of more, how it's impacting our citizens. Cause we are getting a lot of complaints that are called in. I'm getting multiple emails and, uh, multiple phone calls on people that are, you know, fixed incomes. And they are, um, you know, they have to choose between medicine and paying the electric bill. So, this is probably, this, and I can't speak for the board, but I will speak. I know what I've seen for the three days. This is one of their hottest topics that they worked on during this time. So, and it was a long time. I think we slept like six or seven hours over a three-day period. So, this, this, it was really intense. Again, that leads into the reports on the twenty-four, uh, the Southwest legislation. That was when all the counties from Southwest Virginia came together, especially during that first meeting. That's when these topics came up. That was very important and it was on the agendas. And the next day, they had the local VACO Day, which they were setting, going through all the state legislations and the changes and what's happening in Curry. Uh, and this is the time I'd like to give the opportunity to the board members that do wanna speak on their committees. Cause we couldn't all be at one time, cause we had to conquer and divide up there. I mean, we were all going in some, one meeting and some in separate directions. So, um, if that's up to the board, if they wanna speak on any topics or anything that they worked on specifically that was important to the county, then, you know, that's their privilege, so. Well, I would like to say that one of the hot topics, like we say, was power utility increase. And, um, I really appreciate this board. They worked truly together. And we got to share our voice and, and try to protect, uh, the citizens as far as, uh, these high utility rate increases. We don't know what will happen with that. I was able to speak at the VACO conference and tell them that we didn't have any representation in this area on the power utility board. Thought it was crucial that we have representation on this end of the county or Southwest Virginia, uh, to have a voice at the table. Uh, as you well know, uh, AEP is a public traded company. And, you know, they have billions of dollars in surplus. They're actually blaming this on the coal increase, uh, of the price of coal. But I just can't see passing that along to, uh, our citizens as hard as people are having it right now. The county is, uh, been blessed, uh, to be able to do what we've been able to do, but it takes money. We understand, uh, on your end and on our end actually to operate. So, we, we've, I'm, I'm really impressed, uh, with the leadership and how their direction went. They, they were very outspoken, uh, about the needs of our citizens, and I'm grateful for that. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't that they were shy. I can tell you that. None of the newly elected board members were shy. They, they imposed their will on, on telling whoever, uh, whether it be the governor or, or the legislative staff, uh, the needs that we have here in Southwest Virginia. Sometimes we feel left out. We all have felt, felt, felt left out and, and I'm really impressed with that. And that's, that's really all I have to say. But I am thankful for, uh, the board members and their action in Richmond. Uh, newly being appointed, they really took an aggressive role, I will tell you that. And, and I am really impressed, uh, with the way that they handled theirself.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
If I can speak to, uh,
Absolutely.
Lonzo had a meeting set up for him and I with the Department of Agriculture. And sadly, that wasn't able to happen due to a death and, and on their side. Um, they wasn't able to meet with us. But they do plan on coming down in February. They're gonna give us a few dates that we can pick from. And that meeting was gonna involve, uh, an opportunity for a feasibility study relating to the timber industry, which most of you know in here, I'm, I'm a timber guy. Um, and what that's gonna involve is the possibility of exporting logs and lumber from our area straight to other countries. Most of you know about the inland port that's proposed in Washington County. And, um, as soon as I heard Todd P. and bring that up, I was like, that is a boom for our region. It will affect the landowner, the logger, the sawmills, the entire industry. Um, basically what we're doing now is, is our money is getting eaten up in diesel fuel to haul this product that we can see all around our hillsides here. And most of us here know people in the logging industry, or used to be grandparents, parents, somebody that was in the industry. Um, so our, our money's getting eaten up in diesel fuel as this product's traveling. And, uh, if we can get that inland port and we can haul it to Abingdon, and then we can ship it literally anywhere in the world, it'll be a boom for our region. And, uh, we're gonna start that process hopefully here in February. And I just wanted everybody to know, we run on transparency. That's, that's what I'm doing. Uh, we're gonna work on that in February. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
I'll say, um, that I was able to speak to the governor and several of the legislators about, um, Appalachia Power, the power rates, uh, the struggles that, that I'm seeing. I, I'm in HVAC industry. I, I do sales, so I, I speak to a lot of people at their kitchen tables about energy usage, because that's a big part of heating and air. And I'm seeing customers of Appalachia Power with four, five, six, even twelve. I had one the other day, it was twelve hundred dollar power bill from one month. And it's really, comes down to, I think somebody mentioned it before, people have to be decided between whether they're gonna have their power shut off or have, or have heat or have, um, their medicine or food. And it's a struggle, especially when you got a, a, a aging population and a low, eh, low, uh, high poverty level and low income level that we face in Russell County. We need help. And I, I expressed it, you know, I, I didn't mince words and said we are getting murdered by high power rates in, in Southwest Virginia, specifically the AEP counties. Um, and I talked to several other counties that are struggling with the same thing. Um, so this is not just a unique problem for, you know, Russell County. Um, but I, I went up there to, for that one, that was one of my main purposes, was to make sure that they understood how dire we have it in Russell County with our power rates. It's, it's crushing people, and I hate to see that. Um, because it's not, and from, for the foreseeable future, it's probably not gonna get much better, unfortunately. Um, but anything that they can do to help us on that side of things, uh, is really important. Now, of course, the inland port came up in conversation. That's a huge thing. There's an immense amount of funding that they need to get that off the ground. Um, and they're struggling right now to find a lot of funding for that. So, the sooner that project can go, the more revenue for our region. Russell County strategically well-placed with a four-lane that, that travels directly into Abingdon. And so, if it was located in Washington County, it could have a, a huge effect on Russell County revenue. Um, which, that's government talk for taxation. And what that means is, for me as a, as a citizen, if we can get more revenue from business, then we can have less revenue coming from the taxpayer themselves, the individuals. And so, as getting, you know, part of the, the purpose of, of us new members running was to lower taxes and get taxes down. And so, revenue is extremely important to do things, but we wanna bring in business so we can lower personal revenue, uh, personal taxes. That's, that's my main goal, is to make sure we're doing the right things to do what we can do to help you as homeowners, as taxpayers, that you can pay your bills and you can have a decent vehicle and you can keep the lights on and the heat on in your house. And, uh, I do appreciate all the other board members, cause I know that was a topic that, that they also hit on up there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I just wanna say one, one thing. That, uh, I think on the inland port, they required about ninety million dollars. And I think, as I understand it, maybe they've appropriated the first ten to get started on that. So, at least it's a start. One thing we were asked to do is to talk to, I guess, the Attorney General's Office about, uh, some issues with temporary restraining orders, detention orders and things of that nature. And the amount of time that it's, it's occupying our police force, our county deputies. They've spent just an astronomical amount of money over the, the last year, uh, simply because they can't find the appropriate beds for these people with the mental issues. They say that sometimes they're passing police cars coming from other counties, bringing them down here when they're taking their individual to a different area. So, uh, thanks to Mr. Lester, we were able to, uh, uh, I guess obtain a, a commitment from Jason Mayer as the Attorney General to come down in March.
Yes, sir.
He's gonna come down and we're gonna talk to him about that and have the Sheriff's Department present that to him. Plus, we'll be able to talk to him about some other issues too. And I, I would imagine this might be, I think he's probably eyeing the governor's position next term. So, I would think it's probably partly recruiting trips. So, at any rate, he's coming down, we're gonna talk to him, try to get that straightened down. And again, these guys were just like veterans up there. They didn't know a stranger, you know, so. And we met a lot of people and, and, uh, and, and, you know, made a lot of contacts with other people. So, I'll turn it back over to you, Lonzo.
Thank you, Chairman.
The, next thing on the county administrator reports and request is, of course, uh, one of our projects that is for the Lower Bay, Lower Bed Lake Study, the feasibility study. Um, the board supervisor's got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Virginia Economic Coal Development to take a look at this. So, we're looking at different things that we can increase on. Of course, y'all know that the Tate Company has, is implementing their hiring, and that's up to a hundred and seventy. We've got other prospects that are coming in to the other side of the county that y'all will hear in a couple of months that'll be developing and opening up too. So, when we were, the board supervisor was up there talking, they were talking about not just the power bills and the treatment centers and what we have to do as far as transportation, but they also were hammering out the economic development. Like Mr. Hensley was referring to, even that Golden Pond, that will be part of that, what y'all were talking about. That's, that's part of what we're trying to interlace into this as part of a, a satellite to the inland port. It's a satellite. So, if we can get all these things connected together. Now, the next thing that they also connected, that, they also went into tourism. So, we had this report for the opening up the Lower Bed Lake. A lot of people don't know that we got a three-hundred-and-thirty-acre lake sitting over here on the mountain that's in Russell County. So, we have been trying to figure out ways. We've been working with VDOT and the utility companies, property owners, the boards, funding agencies, DWR, which is the Wildlife Reserve, which is where the lake sits and they maintain it. But we are within, uh, I think half a mile of drive, Steve? Uh, half a mile within our roads to the, the access to the lake. So, we figured this would be a great advantage and the feasibility helped us out a lot. Like, again, we got a grant, we're gonna be proceeding with it with Department of Transportation and other funding agencies that can help us take alternate routes. As you can see up here, these are the multiple alternate routes that has been proposed in the feasibility study. And I know it's small and I apologize, but this is the engineering stuff. They put a lot of data in a lot amount, a short amount of time. And as you can see, these, and anybody that wants these, I'll put them up on the website that can take a look at it and see how the, the path. But it looks like, uh, from a termini to termini, it looks like a long way, but it's only a half a mile. That's, that's where we're trying to move through. And we do have to walk through, the access is also in the same path as what they call the Walker Lines of AEP. So, we're trying to stay into safety-wise and, and construction-wise to be able to get a clear path in. So, we'll be proceeding on that in the coming months too. Next on the county administrator reports is, is actually a tie-in with the Heart of Appalachia. They are also, um, a tourism, they're the Heart of Appalachia, they're a tourism authority for, you know, multiple counties in Southwest Virginia. This is a report that was provided by the, to the board supervisors to be able to, you know, not just work on tourism projects that were in Russell County, cause we are developing them. We got boot launches going in, trails going in, uh, and lakes we're working on and maybe jeep trails down in Holacre, equistering trails that we're working on. So, this one also ties in with the whole region, which is the breaks, the casino. This is a comprehensive plan. So, all of the agencies are working in unison to be able to figure this out, to bring more tourism into the county. Next on the county administrator reports is, one, um, the last board meeting, of course, coming in from VDOT, uh, we did away with the Highway Safety Committee. Well, one of the things that we do, we, our, our, my office receives multiple calls from it, and so do the board members themselves, uh, concerning, you know, road repairs, maintenance or issues. from it, and so do the board members themselves, uh, concerning, you know, road repairs, maintenance or issues. So now instead of having 11 or 12 or 13 or 14 on there, we got 27,000 I'm going to ask for. So the way we designed this reporting system, I took VDOTs and I, I borrowed a little bit of it, but I enhanced it with my IT staff. This is online and actually the, uh, I apologize. Just hang on just a second. This is it online. This is a road condition reporting system that we have on our website. You can go in and it's felt, you know, a system. I mean, it, uh, you can put in your address. It would populate what it is. You do the reporting. So what it does is it does multiple things. Instead of having multiple meetings, automatically when you hit the send button on what your issue is, it will send it to me. It will send it back to you. I've offered for the board members to receive these calls too, and it goes to VDOT. So we're hitting in multiple phases, all on a push of a button. So everybody in this room and VDOT is aware of this at the same time in your board members. So, but be cautious, cause some of the po-ho's, you know, we're trying to hit the big things, you know, some of the things that are safety issues. Make sure that we look at, you know, tree downings and that's part of emergency management. So, but we will be reviewing all of these at one time and we'll keep up on these and report them on a monthly basis. So. And then we're getting the systems to work for us. It's, it's more eyes on these issues because Russell County is 477 square miles. And come from VDOT and Terry will tell you, he's over in, in Washington County. When I came from Washington County, they had 10 miles of unpaved roads. We have 110. So that is a harder thing to come up with. So we've got a lot of things to fix and a lot of word, roads to work on. And this is one of the things and advantages for the citizens of Russell County to be able to report their issues of roads, you know, that's in front of their house or on the way to work. Or if they see it, let us know. We, we were, we, we got to make sure, cause we do not want any safety issues out there. Next is, let me get this back up. Yeah. Yeah. I'm going, I'm going, I gotta. Next is the bylaws that we had discussed before. Right now, and I know all of y'all have made comments about the board supervisors cannot answer you back. Well, there's a reason. It's in the bylaws legally, legally, and I got attorney back me up here. Legally, until they make those changes, these are formats that they must go by under parliamentary rules and things that are set in place. So they have set these instructions in. This was previous, previous, previous boards that put in place. So they're, they are taking this under review right now and then looking at all the aspects and all the terminology in it to be able to be more functional with what the citizens are wanting. So if, uh, this, as like I said, they are, they're currently drafting, they're making their additions and, and this should be out soon. So kind of be patient with us until we get this thing in place. Next is the VDOT monthly system, which, you know, again, we're back on VDOT. Um, as you can see, uh, the board action results for the VDOT, the residency has no requests for actions. Uh, but they do give a comprehensive maintenance activities. You'll see what reports that we get from y'all. Y'all will start seeing them on the VDOT reports on issues that we get before, from each of y'all through this reporting system. Next on the, the county ministerial reports and request is-
Lonzo.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna call about a five minute break here. We've been sitting here for a long time. I think people need to get a walk around and go to the restroom.
Yes, sir.
So five or ten, five, 10 minutes. Okay.
If we can get, if we can get everybody back in here, we'll go ahead and resume.
Yep.
Try to get through this.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not, I'm gonna, I can't, I'm drinking more and more floats, so I gotta quit, I gotta quit. I'm gonna have the shakes, I'm gonna have the shakes. I'm afraid they will kill me.
Yeah, I gotta watch the defibrillations, all those things. Is everybody back yet? Let's see, no. Luke, Luke, got everybody? Nate?
Nate, he just walked through here. Oh, okay. I know he just walked through here, I just saw him. Okay.
You got that.
Okay, we'll, we'll call a recess, so we're, and let Mr. Lester continue now.
Thank you. If everyone's comfortable again, let's go back to work. This is the time of the year. Of course, like we had mentioned before, that the Board of Supervisors actively worked with legislators, and actually, the governor himself. They had that opportunity to go face to face with the governor, actually at his office. So, that's very rare for Board of Supervisors to have access like that, and this is one of the things that came up. The Board of Supervisors on December the thirteenth, I think I got it right, don't worry, sorry, December eleventh, did the first original letter of opposition to AEP Appalachian Power and Kentucky Utility. And of the utility rate increases. So, we did the one at the time that was applicable from the information that we had just got from the SEC. So now, we're doing an amended one to reinforce what we had seen, how the actual rates are coming through, and the impact to our citizens. So, I'm going to read some of this, and this is, this is way, and this is while we had talked to the, the issues within the county, because like I said previously, we were getting emails and calls from people that are either on fixed income, low income, or feeling the financial pressure of trying to maintain a house. I've, I've had people that have called me and said that I run the basic heat, I run no heat, and like Mr. Kaiser had said, that my power bill is still five hundred dollars. And that's hard, and we know that, and like Mr. Eaton said, they, we got a few talking points that was during the winter, you know, we know that the, during the snowstorms and the, and the cold weather for days and days. So what the Board of Supervisors, again, wanted to do, to make sure that you knew that we is continuously working on this, what it says, whereas since December twenty twenty-three, the Board supervises a resolution, utility rate increasing notifying utility companies, legislators, state agencies, general assembly, and the governor's office of the concerns. The board has contacted many of the county's citizens, have been contacted by many of the county's citizens and businesses, we kind of left them out because it's, it's hitting them too, are currently being financially impacted, more than ever from electrical costs to use only basic services needed during the recent winter storms with sub-zero temperatures before the utility rates increases or even implement. If y'all don't know, your rate, your electrical bill you just got, it include those days. Some of those days were not included, you will get that on the February bill. So, this is why it was so important that we get on this. Second, it says, the State Corporation Commission approved the Appalachian Power Company, APCO, request for additional customer rate increase of sixteen dollars and three cents per month for every thousand kilowatt of ours to begin on January the thirtieth, see, twenty twenty-four. See, the rate increase did not increase until January the thirtieth. That will generate an extra one hundred and twenty-seven million dollars of revenue. So, Board Supervisor Russ Kenny believes that this is substantially, this substantial utility rate increase to our citizens is one, unreasonable, it's unnecessary, and it will have a detrimental financial effect on all of our citizens, especially those most vulnerable, the elderly and the low-income populations. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County hereby formally request a second really resolution that the local legislators, the Virginia State Corporation Commission, the General Assembly, and the Governor's Office reconsider and rescind the recent utility rate increases to relieve the financial burden to all citizens, and is signed by the Chairman of the Board today. So, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second, have a motion, have a second, any discussion. If not all in favor, signify the same I.
Ah.
All opposed, there certainly are no opposition.
No, thank you Chair. Second thing on the county administrator request is, the Board of Supervisors, this is the board and commissioning authority review that Mr. Kaiser had mentioned before. You already have a motion on that to start the review process, I'm just, I'm, I mentioned it again, that we'll start that process and be sending out the applications. In the applications, that as Mr. Kaiser said, we are, we're looking for more volunteers, always. And we are modifying the application, the application for, you know, boards and commissions, to have a little bit more detail, we're trying, and they are trying hard, and they work, they discuss this often, trying to get more boards and participations in, uh, quickly, because we've got a lot going on. Like I said, you got the Tate Company coming in, you got Polycap right out here that's ready to roll, you got, you know, I'm gonna throw pure salmon out there, that is back on the agenda too. And then, the orbit lake, we got a lot of things going on, so, so, that is, before the board, we already got the approval by the motion. So, that will be out, will be put in the application, is where I'm going with this. The application will soon be up on the website, and we'll, we'll do a public notice when they're available. Second is, we had to deal with the, we had a request from the Virginia Open Authority Cooperative Partnership Grant, for, it's called Project Pan Finder. This is an, a request of our opiate funds from, to provide legal aid to, you know, people that are within the legal system due to drugs or, and they need legal aid. They, they do like driver's license restoration, criminal record expungements, housing, Tennessee divorce, they do, you know, anything that's legal. They're trying to, a lot of times, the recovery and the ones that are very sincere, and they're trying to work, which we do have some, you know, many of those that are working, but they, they can't get their driver's license back because there's legal, so, so this is, they will be given aid to be able to help them out and get their driver's license back and get them back into a productive.
This is primarily for the people in recovery programs.
That is correct, sir, yes sir. And, so, they have asked for an aid, there's multiple counties participating in this, from Smith County, Warsham County, Dixon County, Tassel, and Buchanan, yeah, and Russell. So, I am asking the board, out of the opiate funds, how much they, what their, what they want to donate into the program. The other counties gave approximately ten thousand, and, and that's why you're asking for it. Each one of them gave ten thousands to collect, let it be able to provide these legal services. They do have an office here in Russell County. They work really close with the Judge Moore and the circuit courts and the community work program. These are the people that you see out here doing the community work at the, at these community centers, the government centers, and the rest, so it is a real good program.
What's the balance in that fund?
I, I've got about three hundred and thirty thousand sitting in right now.
So the other counties have gave ten?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to do ten.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to contribute ten thousand dollars to this program. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same I.
Ah.
All opposed, there are no.
Next is also, on the county administrator reports and crest, the request is, this is a resolution for support for recovery of residencies and providing signatory authority for proposal for grant funding from the Virginia Opiate Abatement Authority. This is another opiate request, and this is an agreement between Ruck, Russell and Dixon County. Now, one of the things that Russell County has in it, we have a twenty-two bed recovery right now in Russell County for males, we have a ten-bed recovery for females, which is mentioned through the OAA as one of the premier benchmarks to be used. Dixon County is actually following our suit and doing one in Dixon County. To partner with us, and Russell County is going to be the financial fiduciary on this, even though it's opiate funding, they're, they're following our path. So, this is, this resolution is to, it is a regional application to be set in to go after the state opiate money. This is a little bit of seed money from each of us, that lets them know that this is a regional project, this is between two counties, that makes them eligible for the state funding, and that's when they can, they will get funding to maintain these recovery houses. And that way, when they're in there, they don't have to worry about the taxpayer base, they're working with their community, and they're, and the ones that are there are working. They actually, in our communities, they actually pay a, a fee to stay there every month, every week. They pay a fee, because they're working, they're working, and they're paying to stay there. So, these are coming self-sustainable, but there's opiate money to help them get stabilized, and this is a program that we're using. So I'm asking for a motion and a donation, appropriation.
Again, tell us how much.
Well, I had to explain to, uh, now.
Let me, let me ask you this question. This, this is joint application.
This is a joint application.
And Russell County, and this is going after that. When the opioid money came down, a certain percentage of it went directly to the counties.
That is correct.
And, but a certain portion of it stayed with this opioid authority, and each of the counties can apply it to get that extra money, and that's what this application is for.
That is correct, sir. That, we were doing a joint application with Dixon County to be able to go after the big pot, but it has to be, you know, a joint application or regional.
So that would be money for both their facility and our facility.
That's correct. Washington County already has theirs, which we already know about. Dixon County, like I said, are just now starting their process of this. So now, I can't use Dixon County's opiate funds, I can tell you what they donated, they donated seventy-five thousand dollars to this. So, that, that was, our range at it at the time, even though we were the financial fiduciary, I said twenty-five thousand, that's what we were looking, this is seed money, it's not really the much as a tent, but see Dixon County is the number-one county for opiates in South, in state Virginia. That, that's a given fact. Now, but they're limited on what they can do with their, they got opiate money, so, I hate to say it, if you have a, a high-level risk assessment in opiate, you get more money. But see, they don't have a lot they can do with their money, so they're, they're partnering with us. So that's why you hearing, you know, the seventy-five thousand dollar range, that is not being, yeah. So, but Russell County, we're doing administration on it, so they've got the funding, we're doing administration, we're doing a joint application, so the, the authority, they can go after the big money.
So you want twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to do that, and then after the second, I wanna, I wanna have a little bit of discussion on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Need a second for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, now open discussion.
One of the big needs I see is not just the existing facility, but is there any plan for growth? I know we had an opportunity to partner with Washington County on a women's shelter, or women's housing project, we got voted down pretty heavily on that, because the need is so great for housing and rehabilitation. Within this premise with the funding application, is there any, are they looking into it as far as how we can expand? How we can grow the facility? I mean, right now, we've got men's beds, we're limited in the women's facility with beds, and really, there's a great need wanted, I don't want to mean pull you up, and, and for women. My concern is, we need to make sure that any investment going forward, we need to look at a plan in place for growth, not only in Dickinson, Russell, and Washington. I was supporting the plan for Washington County, because I got some really in deep from one of those, some information in regards to our, people could stay there if we participated in that project. So, we can't hold that up to me and leave people out here in the cold when the need is so great.
Absolutely.
So we need to ma- make sure that whatever we do, that there's some discussion on a potential growth or participation in other areas that we can align with, is my, is my thinking.
And, and, and that is, that fits really in with the vision of what we're trying to do here, because like between Russell and Dixon County, we, it is a heavy, you know, recovery impact for us in the, in the county. To be able to hyper-focus our funding on these recoveries, which we have that recovery male and female, which, again, we were the first one, we just didn't advertise it in, in southwest Virginia. But the OA, the Opiate Authority recognizes us when they get in Richmond, and they start talking, they mention Russell County as, as, as the model to follow. So, again, Dixon County is wanting to get in deeper, the facilities that we have, I have, we have a twenty-two bed capacity facility in a, in a female tent. Now, this will help us expand the females as, as we can beyond the tent. This is extra funding that we're trying to grab a hold of and attach to, so, not just the local.
This is not just to maintain, this is, I mean, what I'm looking for is not just to maintain, but to look at utilizing some of this funding for expansion.
Yeah, in order to expand, though, we have to have
Find facility.
As existing beds somewhere.
Understand, yeah.
The only, you know, it's, it's a ripple effect when we get this, because you, you know, you have more facilities available, you can put more people in drug court, you can put more people in the community workforce program. And, and, and it saves you money at the regional jails, the tune of about seventeen thousand dollars a year each.
It's very pervasive.
And, and, and plus, you're teaching those guys, a lot of those people, how to work. A lot of them didn't know how to work, and a lot of them move on and, and take jobs, so.
Yeah, Mr. Breeding and Mr. Kaiser attended, you know, the regional jail meetings, and they know that the impact that this thing is causing. I mean, we can, we can put everybody in jail, but you're just gonna pay for it, so, I mean, that doesn't make sense. So, you're just gonna sit and pay for them, but I don't mean to be facetious or say anything like it, but the programs that the OAA recovery and the opiate program is, we have our local funds that we can use, and we're using it wisely on the programs, and what we can do here is UC allocated. And then, we have the ones that we can go after regional to be able to sustain these recovery houses. I mean, it, it, it takes, you know, large amounts of funding to be able to sustain these, but, but also, when we do these OAAs, it, it also, it opens us up for SAMSA grants too. Right now, we're on the path, we just got, Rebecca will tell you, she sits on the board, Rebecca Di does, and they, they're going, working towards certification, so that's, that's the ultimate goal, to be able to get these in and billable at a certain amount. We have certain beds that are purchased right now by Department of Corrections, they pay for certain. The members that sit in the houses, they pay, you know, rental, I mean, I mean, uh, uh, revenue off of this on, on a weekly basis of each one. But it's not self-sustaining yet. So they're, they're utilizing the opiate funds to be able to do this. And it's a mechanism that way the counties are not using their general funds to sustain them. And you get the benefit of having the work community program workers come out to the community and pick up trash along the road. When you see these, this is the program that you see, or at the community, or at the courthouse working, or here working, or at the churches working. We use them all over this county in some capacity. So again, I, motion, twenty-five thousand.
Okay, we have a motion. You know, first of all, there's only a further discussion on this matter. We have a motion, we have a second on the board to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to this joint resolution. Trying to secure more money for, uh, for Dickinson and Russell County recovery houses. I want to ask all of you in favor to say aye. All opposed, same sign? It's unanimous, Lonzo.
Thank you, sir. Next on the county ministerial reports and requests is the, um, is again, we're on a housing topic again. So this is Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is the HUD responsibilities. These are the, um, permitting that they have to have from the governing board every year and their five, their, um, for the environmental review exemptions and also their five-year annual plan. So I need a motion for approval for the, uh, uh, the Department of Housing, Urban Development HUD through the Cumberland Plateau Regional Housing Authority.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. There are none?
Next on the county ministerial request is, uh, this is a community block grant, uh, at the Dainte Regional Sewer. Oh, did I? Oh, I did, didn't I? Yeah, I did. That was, that was unintentional. That, that was a county administrator. Here we go. Uh, I was pulling the papers together and just pulled them up, okay? Um, next on the county ministerial requ- request is the Host Agreement Resolution Public Hearing Notice. Uh, of course, right now that this is, has been tentatively scheduled for March the second of two thousand twenty-four, the next board meeting at nine A M. Uh, I know there has been board members that may have a conflict on this. And the second thing that there was concerns with in talking to the chairman is, um, the public hearing and the board meeting together might make it a little, you just see, we gotta do business. So we may, they may decide to separate. That's a discretion of the board supervisors. So I'll leave it up to the chairman.
I just, I just think we need to hold the, the public hearing so we can concentrate just on that and all by itself. You know, and, and we worry about the business at the regular board meeting, so we probably need to set up a special meeting, you know? So, when, when do you, I mean, we need to advertise pretty quickly then.
Uh, by law on this one, and, and Terry, I, I need a thirty-day notice, so it's gotta be later. Uh, I had, it's not the fifteen as usual, it's the thirty. Yeah, be able to get it in the day. I'd have to advertise today, yeah. Cause February's gonna, we got, what, twenty-nine?
Yeah, that's right. It's only got twenty. Uh, so you can't, you can't have it, you couldn't, you couldn't have it at your next meeting. So you need to figure another day.
So look at the calendars. Well, it's already scheduled in the bigger.
Yeah, it will be.
It's already scheduled in the bigger room. That's, that's already on here.
Lonzo, let me ask something, um, and I know it's probably out of protocol, but I'll ask the public. What, what, if the people in this room, would you prefer a weeknight or a Saturday? For the, yeah, for the landfill meeting, basically, public hearing? Uh, well, I mean, would you prefer a weeknight or? In here? Speak up?
I, I don't think we can have two. Let's, let's pick a time where we can, where we can all, you know, something is convenient for everybody.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to work with you all so that, so that most, the most people can be there to have, yeah, Mr. Uh, Ring. Right. Sure. Okay. Six P M. on a weeknight? Is that what? Weeknight, okay. I know that's different for some people who work, you know, nine to five jobs, but we can.
Or we can, you know, how about seven? I mean, is that too late, you know? Seven would be better, give more people an opportunity to get there.
Y'all be, y'all be prepared for a late night, early morning, because it might go a long time. Con- Conference Center is the largest facility we have in the county.
It's not a host agreement, it's a ho, it's a resolution for a host. This is the legal process. A resolution, yes, yeah. Right now, the special counsel is developing that, so it will be available, yes, by next week. Yeah, yeah. The host agreement, that's in a different process. There's, there's processes you go, go through legally. This is a resolution for the host agreement to proceed, so after the public hearing.
I understand, that's the process. It's number one, number two.
We are gonna provide some financial information.
Yeah.
We, we'll provide you with some financial projections. Okay, okay. We, we need to get through our agenda here and then we can talk about that at the end if you want to.
Yeah, that's not, so.
So we just need to pick a week, weeknight, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, um, see, if you have to get the thirty-day notice, so, and I gotta have it in the paper. So if you wait now, my next run, Sean, you here? Okay, um, yeah, okay. So, so we're looking at a minimum advertisement of, and that's a, at the church night, which we don't wanna do that. Uh, six. Or the Friday the eighth? That worked, that would work, Friday the eighth, that's a.
Friday?
March the eighth.
I'll make a motion for Friday, March eighth at seven P M. in the Conference Center.
Steve's like, I got plans Friday. Ain't your anniversary, is it, Steve?
We need to make sure you got the conference room open for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we will have. Yep. So March the eighth at seven to ten? All right.
Okay, have Andrew make a motion?
If we're in discussion, can, we, we set our parameters for a time and people don't wanna be there all night. Can, can we carry that meeting over to another meeting?
You, you can recess and re-adjourn, yes.
Okay. We, we can adjourn to re, to reconvene.
Yeah. Yeah, recess, sorry, reconvene.
We just to see how it works out. We can do that, yeah.
Better long now.
Okay, can I call for a vote now? Okay, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign.
Got it. Okay, the, uh, the community block grant of the Dainte Sewer, as mentioned before, this is the additional million dollars that come from D H C D. Now for a total of three point five million for the Dainte Sewer Treatment Plan, I need a motion for approval.
It is a hundred percent grant.
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion for a hundred percent grant.
You like, this is a good motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, there are none?
Next on the county ministerial require, uh, request is I need a motion for ten thousand dollars to the Russell County Animal Shelter. Um, and it's an M O U for the care of the animals and vetting and animal medicine, medication supplies. This is, uh, it also includes collars and leashes and et cetera. And I need a motion to accept ten thousand grant also.
I'll make that.
Have a motion, have a second? Terry, have a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, none?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, next on there is the Oak Grove, uh, land use permit application uh, for Gary Easterly and John Frederick Perry. Um, they are requesting on the, uh, at the Oak Grove Community Center, uh, their land, their farm um, is adjacent to it on all sides and they want to be able to clear the right of way and put up a fence. It's at their cost. They're gonna clear the trees and reinstall a fence in to the, the back of it. And one of the things that, uh, Mr. Hensley had, had, and I met with him and discussed that they're gonna clear the trees. They're gonna set the trees off to the sides and then the community workers are going to come in and cut up the logs and donate them to churches for energy. So we're, we're using that whole right of way to be able to do that too. So, um, you can thank Mr. Hensley for that. He, he, he's into farming and he hadn't negotiated. Uh, I need a motion for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Second, have a motion and a second to approve that. Any, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, there are none?
Yeah, they own this property all the way around here. They're, they're going to put the fence all around the adjacent back of the community center. So that's the, yep. Next on the county ministerial request is the Planning Commission Plats. This is for the Matthew Sergeant, request for the combination of five lots into the Robert Minton subdivision. Lots twenty through twenty-four off of Route eight eleven, I need approval.
Uh, that was recommend, uh, approval was recommended by the Planning Commission.
That is correct. Uh, it, actually it was, the motion was made by Terry Di.
Oh.
And second by Greg Stutes.
Need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second, have a motion and a second to approve those plats. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, there are none?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, last one on the, uh, is a travel request for mandatory train for building code into Christiansburg. And, uh, for the, uh, building staff, I need approval for it.
I'll make it motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the travel request, uh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, there are none, okay?
Chairman, that concludes the county ministerial reports and requests.
Great. Okay, we're, at the time of the board, we're down to the point now that we, we do what we call board discre, board discussions and reminders. And that's each board member's opportunity to talk about whatever they wanna talk about. And maybe even for some of you guys to make, answer questions or make questions. So I'll start with District One, Mr. Hensley down there. Do you have anything, Andrew, that you wanna talk about?
Yes, uh, it'd been brought to my attention some couple of months back, friend of mine and, uh, we jokingly refer to each other as I'm his favorite supervisor and he's, uh, my favorite bodyguard. But, uh, we'd been talking about, uh, ordinances and, uh, waste ordinances. And so anyways, I've dug through a whole lot here and there is a solid waste management ordinance. Now, this was put together in two thousand seventeen and this includes a lot of information that, from agricultural waste. You know, myself, if you own a farm, you, something passes away and you have to dispose of it properly. Um, it goes into, uh, convenience sites. That's, that's where we presently haul our trash. But in, in that ordinance, it mentions landfills. And he had remembered this from many years ago and, and I didn't. Um, I don't know if I wasn't paying that attention at the time, but I forgot. So I looked this up. And if you go on down through here, there is a, uh, section on general prohibitions that describes private landfills. And if you go on down again, it mentions, uh, borrow pits and privately licensed solid waste facilities. And based on my understanding, the county stance when this was put together, and, and this ordinance could have been copied from neighboring counties. That's common. Um, but when it was put together, as long as a facility was licensed and abiding by state and federal regulations, it would be okay to come to Russell County. That's my understanding. Somebody can correct, correct me later if I'm wrong. But I just wanted to make the public aware that this ordinance exists. Get you a copy. I'm no attorney. I just read and understand what I'm able to. We got a lot of smart people in this county. Look into that, see what you can come by that. We're gonna have our public comment hearing next month. You can look into this and maybe that'll help you a- ask questions when you get there. And, uh, that's all I have today. Thank you.
District two, District three.
Um, the only thing I really wanted to mention was, um, I don't know if you all are familiar with Isaiah House. But, um, we have, they have approved for Isaiah House to come here. Um, it'll be shared between Dickinson, Russell and Tazewell Counties. Um, they're, they're still, I think they still have to meet with, um, let me look, I got a text, sorry. Uh, Russell and Tazewell D S S on this Monday. Um, but that is gonna be such an asset to our county and not just our county, but surrounding counties. You know, we have, um, currently, I think it was four foster families in Russell County. We have seventy-ish kids at any given time and this is something that really, really needs to, to be addressed. Um, and you know, those kids that get taken from their homes, they, you know, already kind of stay at the D S S office until they can find a placement for them. And Sandy, that can be sometimes days, correct? Weeks. So, you know, you're, you're looking at that, this, this room here, I mean, it's just bland. You imagine you're a little kid, you come in here and you pile up and this is where you are for a few weeks. It's not okay. So, um, if you feel led to, to be a foster parent, please do so.
Mr. E, District four?
I just wanna say thanks to everybody that, that came today and spoke. Uh, I know it's, it's a tough, it's a tough environment. I understand that. I just want that gentleman to know I wasn't laughing. I was trying to express my feelings because I didn't want anybody to be rude both ways. I don't want us to be rude to each other. And there's been a lot of things throughout on social media and been very degrading to me, my family, my seventeen-year-old that looks at this and says, I can't believe somebody would try to expose our family in the nature that they have. Uh, I want us all to live here, love here and get along here. I don't think it's in any person's right to throw stones at any public official or, or I wouldn't do that to you. Uh, you know, I, I want us all to get along. I want us all to understand that we're gonna do the right thing, uh, for this county. We're gonna follow the law. That's the most critical aspect of this, is following the law, making sure that we do the right thing. I'm not gonna jeopardize my family or anything like that in regards to that. We're taking outside counsel. I will further tell you, Terry Kilgore is not the lead counsel on this project. We hired outside counsel to give us direction. We hired an outside consultant to give us an understanding and cor, and correction on any of these matters. So I want the public to know that. I mean, we, we're not taking this lightly. We're, we're gonna look at every avenue and, and every obstacle and everything that we're looking at. But we But we all sitting in this room want the best for our kids and grandkids. I've got three kids and two grandkids. I want the best for them also, so. You know, the things that's been said, the things that's acts like we're, we're doing special favors or we're taking monetary value, I guarantee you one thing. I would never do that, and I don't think anybody sitting on this board would do that. And for anybody in here to make accusations and degrade us. And anybody that we select to put on these boards, that have the nerve to degrade us after we put you on a board. And, and put you under a, a, you know, in a position, that, there's no company out here that would allow boss to talk to them like that. You'd be fired. You'd be fired. And I just, I want us all to get along, and I want us all to be respect, respectful. Bring out any information you have. We, we've, we've had a lot of very intelligent people here, brought out a lot of good points and a lot of good information. And we, we respect that and we appreciate that. So I just want everybody to know, when we go into this, let's see what we can and cannot do legally. Let, let's, let's evaluate where we're at with this. It's not a personal opinion of what my thoughts is or whatever. It's following the law and the legal manners of what we gotta do, so I want everybody to understand that. Let's love each other, let's get along with each other, let's don't throw stones. Let's all try to work together to try to resolve all the issues, not just this issue, but we're going to have a lot more issues coming down the pike that we're all going to have to work together on as citizens. So I just want to let everybody know.
Rebecca, District six?
No, not today, thanks.
Mr. Nate Kaiser, at large.
Well, appreciate everybody coming out in the comments. Um, I'm going to hang around afterwards, if anyone wants to talk some. I know a lot of people have frustrations with how much we can communicate back and forth from the board. Um, and also, you know, as far as us being together and having conversations, but I, I want full transparency. You, if you want to know what I know. Come ask me. I'll tell you everything I know. I'll tell you as I understand it. Um, it might be limited, I don't know. You know, I'm limited by my own intelligence and my own infor- the information that I have. Um, you know, because I don't have all the answers. But I, I do want to find all the answers, and I want to work with you all to do that. That's why I ran, to do what's right and what's best for Russell County, to protect the county, to, to protect the citizens and protect our environment. That's very important to me. I've got kids here that I want to stay here, grow up here, live here, work here, and raise their families here. That's very important to me. Um, so, you know, I'm not your enemy. You know, I know a lot, there's a lot of adversarial, uh, attacks against me and others on this board. Um, but I haven't cast a vote, and I'm still taking all the information in and processing and, and ruminating on everything. And I think that's the only fair way to do things. Uh, but I want, I want to have an open dialogue with you, you know? I know a lot of these other board members get a lot of messages. I, believe it or not, I don't get a lot of messages from people. I don't know if it's because I'm a dagum giant and look like a freak of nature. But, uh, a lot of people, a lot of people won't reach, reach out to me. But I'm willing to have a talk. I'm, I'm actually a pretty friendly guy, believe it or not. So, um, but I want productive, productive conversations. I, I will not engage in a conversation that's, that's adversarial, that's not productive. So, if you want to have a productive conversation, if you want to sit down, and we, we want to try to find solutions together, let's do that. I'm ready to do it. All right, thank you all.
Okay, my turn. Uh, again, I appreciate everybody coming out early on a Saturday morning. We'll get out at time for lunch, maybe. Uh, one thing about the room here, there are plans underway to expand this room. Uh, you're going to knock this wall out, aren't you, Lonzo? So we're going to knock this wall out and probably move this over in that direction and try to get that opened up so people can come in directly here, you know? You'll have, we want that, instead of that being a, an outside waiting room where you can't see the board, it'll be an expansion of this room. And if it comes to the point that we have to go to a bigger room, if we start getting bigger in crowds, we'll just go up to the conference center. I certainly want to, you know, try to do that. I know R D may be confused, the, that two hundred and thirty-two acres of level property over at Moss Three is not owned by the contractor, the people that put in the landfill in. That's owned by the Russell County I D A. And, uh, they've had some activity on it. Uh, they had a letter of intent from one company, which is one reason why they couldn't really talk about it. I think that letter of intent's been lifted now. Uh, but that, that's something that, you know, has a great deal of possibilities, that, that particular site. In fact, it, it could blend into something that Andrew was talking about, which is inland port. Uh, years, I guess it, what, four or five years ago, we, we had a logger that came in and was interested in using that particular site. For, and, well, what he called it, an inland port, and what we were calling an inland port, I guess. But he wanted to do basically the same thing that Andrew's proposing here. And, uh, he was going to ship them out from there. And, uh, he said all his logs went to China, you know? But apparently he was getting a pretty good price for them, but he had to fumigate them and he had to dry them before he can put them on a rail car. So, I think if you're looking at ninety million dollars to get the one in, uh, Washington County started. And they've appropriated ten, it may be another five years before they get the rest of that money. That over there could start, I'd say, within less than a year, you know? I mean, with the, with the right, you know, contracts. And I don't think it would have to be a full fledged industri- uh, uh, inland port, but it could be just a shipping point. Uh, if we could, you know, set the other stuff up there. The rate increases from A E P, that, they've been devastating to all our people. I get comments from a lot of different people. My electric bill shot up myself, you know? Uh, and it's, but it's especially hard on these people that've got fixed incomes. And you can imagine what it'd be like if you had a minimum check from Social Security, you know? And you're trying to pay five or six hundred dollar, I mean, it could just, it could just eat up your, eat up your entire check, you know? And, and I know most of it is coming from that fuel surcharge that comes in there, and it jumps up and down, varies all the time. But, uh, we're, we're trying to work towards that, and, and you know, that's in our consideration too, you know? You know, we, we can't, we just really can't increase any additional expenses on a lot of these people because they just can't bear the burden, you know? I want to point out too, I did the same thing you did. Mr. Kilgore is not our attorney on the landfill. We hired a special counsel there. And he's a gentleman, it's an older gentleman, it's, uh, well versed in landfills, he's done a lot of them. Uh, we'd also hired a consultant too, to monitor the information that the, the, the landowner did, uh, the landfill group. To look at it and verify it and, and, you know, see if there wasn't anything out of whack. His gentleman used to be head of D E Q. A fellow named David Paylor with, uh, uh, Pontista, I think is his name, yeah. And I'll follow up a little bit on what David said about all the comments, you know? Some of those comments at the meeting were just out of order, you know? And, and the worst thing about it is, when you make comments like that. It just gives their whole area a bad view. If people see that, and I'm sure it'll be on YouTube and people will see it, and they're going to look, there's that bunch of old hillbillies down there in Ap- Appalachia, you know? Uh, we, we got to be better, we got to be better to ourselves. I'm pretty thick skinned, it didn't bother me. You can attack me personally, I could, it just kind of rolls off. I went to V M I, and I couldn't have possibly been treated any worse than I was treated the first year I was up there in the Rat Line. So I learned how to get by without that stuff. And one gentleman accused me of being a draft dodger, and I thought, well, hell, I was at V M I for four years. I could, could have been commissioned as a second lieutenant when I graduated. But there weren't any commissions out there, so they gave everybody the opt out, so I just opted out of it. Uh, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's just, it, it's, you know, a lot of innuendo, a lot of, uh, you know, suggesting this and that. Uh, have you gotten any financial favors or other kind of favors? My wife texted me and said, do you have any kind of these favors? I said, no, not lately, you know? So, but at any rate, we, we got to be better to ourselves. I, I want everybody to be respectful. When you get down to personal attacks on people, you don't have anything, any, any argument. I mean, what you guys did to be handing papers out, that's the thing to do. Put, put that, I asked, I had one fellow online, and then Mr. Clark, and we were going back and forth. And I never said that I wanted twenty-six thousand people. I just said, there's twenty-six thousand people in the county, and we need to, you know, a group of fifty to a hundred. Doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's against it, you know? But we need, we need more information like that. And I asked him, he, he told me he had researched landfills throughout the world. And I asked him, I said, since you've done that, how about sharing some of that information with us? Because I'd love to see it myself, you know? I've looked at it. Uh, some of the first pictures that I saw, I traced it down on the, one of the, one of the first ugly pictures that came out about landfill. I traced it down on, on the, the internet and found out it was a picture of an open dump that was taken in Poland in nineteen ninety-nine, you know, twenty-four years ago, you know? So, I mean, you almost have to look at, at stuff like, you know, look for stuff like that if you want to, you know? But, uh, legitimate evaluations and things of that nature, I'm, I'd love to see them, you know? I'm a professional engineer, I have to keep all my licenses up, even though I'm retired, I do that. And, uh, I've worked in landfills. I did a lot of work at Mercer County landfill, you know, probably twenty-five years ago. They were doing these liner systems back then, I mean, in West Virginia, and I mean, the cost was like five, six dollars a square foot to put that stuff in. I can only imagine what it's going to cost now. But, uh, we have to get rid of our trash somewhere. And, and it's, it's almost hypocritical to say, I don't want to hear, but I'll be glad sent down to Bluntville, you know? We just, we just got to work through this. If we'd sit down and talk to either, each other rationally, and not get mad, and not let our, let our tempers get the best of us. We'll come to some sort of solution on this, so. But we are going to have this, this public hearing. We'll have some cost information that we'll share. Uh, we're looking at the, all the county finances and what kind of impact it's all going to have on the county, you know, one way or the other. Uh, but, you know, we've got, right now, we have a three-year contract. We're in the first year of the three-year contract, uh, with the Waste Authority, our, uh, the Bluntville Group. Our costs jumped up about three hundred thousand dollars from last year to this year, which is a pretty substantial jump. In fact, the first time they bid the contract, they had to reject it because it was so high. We came back and rebid it again, and they got something that we, we didn't really have much choice but to live with. It, it took a chunk out of our budget, but we had to do it, you know? And we've got that, we've got two more years of that past this year. And, uh, but there are escalation clauses in that. It's going to go up at least another couple of dollars a ton each year. Uh, and inflation's, you know, inflation's killing us, you know? Our old landfill down on seventy-one, as somebody mentioned, it's an old unlined landfill. It's the reason, we're getting a lot of leachate off of it. And we're trying our best, we budget about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for that, don't we, Lonzo? And, uh, to try to take care of that. Part of it is in doing the groundwater monitoring, which you do forever. And part of it is in taking the leachate, treating, uh, hauling it to a treatment facility so we can treat it. But, uh, that's an old unlined landfill. They don't, it's a thing of the past, you know? So, hang in there with us, we'll get through this, and let's kind of try to be a little nicer to each other. Thank you all for coming. Yes, sir, go ahead. Speak up, would you speak up a little?
No.
No.
No. No, I mean, anybody can say whatever they want.
No. Yeah. We're certainly not, I think everybody up here believes in the freedom of speech, for sure. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, just be truthful, yeah. I mean, I, I understand this is really an emotional issue. It, it really is. It's, it's a lot of emotion in there. But when somebody tells me, well, it just won't, and they can't tell me why. Yeah, yeah. Okay. We're, we're going to go ahead and close it out now. We're done.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.